The council will come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Lasfara. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Hopkins is present. Alderman Lasfara is present. Alderman Dow. Alderman Dow is present. Alderman King. Alderman King is present. Alderman Harrison. Alderman Harrison is present. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Harris. Alderman Harris is present. Alderman Beal. Alderman Beal is present. Alderman Zelowski Garza. Zelowski Garza is present. Alderman Thompson. Alderman Thompson is present. Alderman Cardness. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Quinn is present. Alderman Burke. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Lopez is present. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Moore. Alderman Curtis. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman O'Shea is present. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Brookins is present. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Tabarez. Alderman Tabarez is present. Alderman Scott. Alderman Scott is present. Alderman Tito Lopez. Tito Lopez is present. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Burnett is present. Alderman Urban. Urban is present. Alderman Talafaro. Talafaro is present. Alderman Raboyas. Raboyas is present. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Waguspack. Alderman Waguspack is present. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Rodriguez Sanchez is present. Alderman Austin. Austin is present. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Ramirez Rosa is present. Alderman Vegas. Vegas is present. Alderman Mitz. Mitz is present. Alderman Spisato. Alderman Nugent. Nugent is present. Alderman Vasquez. Vasquez is present. Alderman Napolitano. Napolitano is present. Alderman Riley. Alderman Smith. Smith is present. Alderman Tunny. Tunny is present. Alderman Gardner. Gardner is present. Alderman Kappelman. Kappelman is present. Alderman Martin. Martin is present. Alderman Osterman. Osterman is present. Alderman Haddon. Haddon is present. Alderman Silverstein. Silverstein is present. I have Alderman King and I have Alderman Smith.
There are 37 members present. We have a call. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance. Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing for the invocation, which is going to be delivered by Bishop David Todd Whitley from the Corinthian Temple of God in Christ, West Garfield Park, West Side in the house.
West Side in the house, amen. Good morning, good morning. Let us pray. God of justice and mercy and love, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our great city on today. Help this body of city leaders to act and conduct their business with character and conviction and the spirit of compassion. Help them to listen with understanding and goodwill and help them to speak with clarity and charity. Certainly, Father, we thank you for our Honorable Mayor, our distinguished city council, the city officials, the staff, and all those assembled here on this morning. We pray earnestly and sincerely for our mayor and the entire city council that you will keep them in good health and continue to guide them in their decisions to bless and benefit our entire city. And finally, Father, we ask that you renew us all with the strength of your presence and the joy that comes in building up the communities in which we live, work, worship, and educate our children. This is our prayer in the name of the Father who created us, in the name of the Son who died for us, and in the name of the Holy Ghost who now fills us. Let us all say, amen. God bless you all, West Side.
Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, next up on the agenda is public comments.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for aldermatic review. Today's first speaker is Mr. George Blakemore.
George Blakemore, and I'm a concerned citizen. This is disgraceful down here today. Only two public speakers, and they happen to be two black men. One black man down here trying to get a contract, and another black man is down here trying to get justice and equality and equity for his people. I want that black man to get, when he speak up, for contracts. This is disgraceful. A police department is disgraceful with these selling. Over $100 million have been spent, taxpayer money, because of the behavior of the police and the atrocities. Three years or four years ago, when this black woman was, they broke in her house, and she was nude naked. That would never, never happen to a white woman. Now, I'm used to calling these black altar sambo's, angel mamas, and all kind of house inn. But all of us need to stand up, participate in government. If you wanted to work, you got to come down here and make it work. And if all this money coming in, that's in a structure, black men got to work, black women have to work. And your motto should be, if we can't work, nobody work. Now, what's coming about is, it's terrible, the behavior of black people, leaving their city, and Hispanics are coming in, Asians are coming in, whites are coming in. Why are you leaving? If it's something good for Chicago for them, why is not good for you? Stand up, speak up, advocate, and you entitled. Black lives matter. If you have bad schools, it's because you. If you have high crime, it's because of you. Now, if your parts are inferior, it's because of you, you black men and women. You're disgraceful. I don't want this to happen again. In and meet, advocate, come down here and demand what you want. White lives matter. That would have never happened to a white woman. White lives matter. White lives matter. And when it comes to slating these machines, Democratic AI machines, they pick your leader. You don't pick them. Now, somebody is beating on Al, you, Rainey, you need to stop it. And he's disgraceful, Miss Lightfoot. That one right there, very disrespectful, very disrespectful. God bless each one of you. Merry Christmas to all of you. And I'm telling my black people, you know better, you must do better, and God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Blakemore, for your comments. Our next speaker is Anna Burke.
Good morning. My name is Anna Burke, and this is the third time I am sharing with everyone to remind you, I am a community health educator and a speech-language pathologist. I want to talk about what has happened in our country and my personal experiences in my travels, because it tells a very important, true story. According to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, on March 11th, back in 2020, the World Health Organization declared the COVID-19 outbreak a pandemic. Also, according to the CDC and a data tracker that is updated daily, I believe in the past 30 days, the U.S., there have been 796,000 deaths from COVID-19. Also, according to the CDC, COVID-19 ranks as one of the top 10 causes of death for children aged 5 through 11 years of age. At the beginning of the global pandemic in Illinois, Governor J.B. Pritzker tried to come up with a coordinated response, which, with the term "all in Illinois," and he kept getting sued. According to chalkbeat.org, in an article from August 12th, 2020, titled "Despite Setbacks, Trump Administration Doubles Down on Push to Reopen Schools." School buildings, President Trump and Education Secretary Betsy DeVos continued to make the case that schools must reopen because children benefit from in-person learning and the economy benefits from the de facto childcare that schools provide. Former President Trump was quoted as saying, "We cannot stop 50 million American children from going to school and harming their mental, physical, emotional, and academic development and inflicting long-term lasting damage." This was unfortunate, because now, according to the CDC, COVID-19 ranks as one of the top 10 causes of death for children 5 to 11 years of age. I have been traveling around, working at various schools this year, because people have been trying to hurt me. I have realized it has been going on for some time. I am not sure if it's because I had a long-term relationship with a very special person, who I believe had family in the Secret Service, or if it's because my very caring father-in-law is a licensed private detective in Illinois, or if it's because I have a similar name to the Illinois Supreme Court Chief Justice. I have been reporting my concerns to the Chicago FBI, how people, including judges, have hurt me. According to the FBI.gov, the mission of the FBI is to protect the American people and uphold the Constitution of the United States, and the vision is to stay ahead of the threat. I learned from working at so many different towns, counties, school districts this year, that every school has responded to COVID-19 in different ways. Some require PCR testing, some do not. Some follow guidance they signed out, some do not. If there is not a coordinated standard and no one is following the same world and national health guidance, how will we ever stop the spread? Some people are still too young to be vaccinated. I just heard the song "Gangsta's Paradise" on the radio the other day, I think when I was driving around Grundy County with a blue teddy bear my aunt made me, that has stitched on its back in loving memory of Carmella Behonik, who is my mom. The lyrics I heard on the radio said, "Tell me what..."
Ms. Burke, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Melvin Bailey.
Good morning, City Council. Good morning, Mayor. Hey, Mayor, what I want to talk about is a great disappointment. It's a weed-cutting service, a target market contract, specification 1199730. Touch and Go was awarded Grid D to cut the weeds this summer. But in May, Acting Commissioner, what's his name, Johnson, he reached out to Touch and Go to make sure that the weed service and the West Side get cut. You know, I'm filled with a lot of emotions, Mayor, because, you know, it's disrespectful and grave, and very dishonest and Streets and Sand to do a small African-American woman company like this. I'm going to put the notes down and just speak from my heart, because it's wrong for Tommy Johnson to call us, to ask us to cut. When you, when you and all the aldermen on the West Side saying, "What's wrong with the West Side and the, and the weeds are being, not being serviced?" He called us and we cut them. And it's seven months that Touch and Go still haven't been paid this date, seven months. But procurement, along with Shana Sims, she been doing her best to mend the relationship with Streets and Sand and Touch and Go, a women-owned business, target-market business, to try to make sure that they get paid. But unfortunately, Streets and Sand has, since August, we met once, then September, we met again, and every time procurement scheduled a meeting, it get, puts off, delay, delay, and delay. We was like, it takes seven months to review an invoice? Seven months? We talking about since May. Touch and Go haven't got paid, and Mayor and city council members know me, I fight for the, the young man to get the guns out their hand, to get the, to stop this violence in the community. And when they came to me to ask me, "Melvin, help us clean these lots," and I went and got them, young man. When you was on Pulaski, Mayor, I went and got them, young men, and helped them, saying, "Man, here's an opportunity to make sure y'all can, a, a, a job, to have a job." But now, it's seven months later, and now they constantly pushing the meeting back and back and back, talking about, and it's very, and, and, and it hurt me to my heart to mention Mr. Tommy Johnson's name. I thought he was a dear friend to make sure that a small minority company will stay in business. And I know, Mayor, I know from your speech and your movement, you're not, and, and city council members are not in it to put a small, black, prime out of business. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bailey, for your comments. Our next speaker is Tom Ricketts.
Good morning, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Tom Ricketts. I'm the chairman of the Chicago Cubs, and I'm asking for your support on the sports wagering ordinance. This ordinance will allow us and other venues in the city to construct sports bar restaurants with a limited number of windows for sports wagering. These are not mini casinos in any way. They will not have slot machines, card games, roulette wheels, or table games. The sports book will, however, have a large and positive impact on the city. This ordinance will create jobs today. We are ready to go with construction of our sports book. This will create hundreds of construction jobs in the short run, and we estimate 400 permanent full-time jobs when the construction is complete. And as we have demonstrated with our Wrigley Field development, we are committed to working with minority women and veteran-owned contractors, as well as having a diverse permanent workforce. This ordinance is good for our small and local business community. Every sports venue is looking for ways to contribute to the economic health of our neighborhoods on non-game days. We have worked hard to make Wrigley Field a year-round destination for both our neighbors and those visiting Chicago. This ordinance will attract more people on days when we don't have games and generate more activities on game days themselves. This ordinance is also good for our sport team. Incremental attendance and marketing relationships with our sports gaming partners will provide our sports teams with extra resources that can be used to help put more competitive teams on the field. And importantly, help us keep up with other teams that are monetizing their sports gaming opportunities. This ordinance will also generate substantial tax revenue. As you know, this ordinance will unlock 50 million in tax revenue to rebuild Illinois, much of which will go to help benefit the city of Chicago. Other taxes generated at state, county, and city level will go toward improving our communities as well. This ordinance will have all of these positive benefits without limiting the city's options to generate more revenue from gaming. As shown by the experience in other jurisdictions, the testimony of large casino operators, and the conclusion of the only independent study, the study commissioned by the city, that this will not have an economic impact on the viability of any potential future Chicago casino. The fact is, sports gaming is less than 2% of casino revenue, and there is no evidence that even that would be affected by this ordinance. Nor will this ordinance prevent the city from having any other discussions about finding the best long-term gaming strategy. I also move, I urge us to move forward today. The Illinois Sports Wagering Act was passed over two years ago, and this ordinance has been discussed since July. Further pointless delay just continues to deny economic benefits to the city, including a significant number of jobs. For these and many other reasons, I hope that we have your support today for the sports wagering ordinance. Thank you and happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ricketts, for your comments. Our next speaker is Michelle Williams.
Michelle Williams is not present.
Our next speaker is Myra Kajah.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Myra Kajah, and I'm a resident of the 5th Ward and have served as a local school council member at Hyde Park Academy. To the Mayor and Alderwoman Leslie Harrison, I'm deeply concerned with the rising rent, housing instability, and threat of displacement growing in our ward in relation to the housing market speculation brought on by the arrival of the Obama Presidential Center. The 5th Ward is the number-one ward for eviction filings in 2021, according to the Lawyers Committee for Better Housing. Blocks away from the OPC's home in Jackson Park, the South Shore neighborhood is made up of 77% renters, over half of whom are rent burdened or spend more than 30% of their income on rent. Meanwhile, 20% of housing units in the neighborhood are vacant. After a year of talking to community members via door-knocking and town halls, the Obama Community Benefits Agreement Coalition has written a package of policies that city council has the legal and financial means to enact right now. The six demands can be read on obama cba.org/southshore. The CBA demands are written to protect homeowners, condo owners, and renters. These include measures such as expanded ARO requirements, a renewed South Shore program based on renewed wood lawn, a South Shore loan fund based on wood lawn loan fund, long-term homeowner improvement grant, preservation of existing affordable rental, affordable housing on city-owned vacant lots, Chicago Low-Income Housing Trust Fund, debt forgiveness for home and condo owners, an Office of the Tenant Advocate, a rental registry, a rental assistance program, expanded fare notice, right to return for new development, cap on application fees, cap on move-in fees, cap on security deposit fees, and tenant opportunity to purchase. Last year, the city council passed the Wood Lawn Housing Ordinance after a long-fought campaign for a community benefits agreement. This was a huge win for residents of the 20th Ward, but unfortunately, the protections do not extend to other affected residents of neighboring wards. Longtime residents of the 5th Ward should benefit from the resources the Obama Presidential Center will bring, not be displaced before the center opens. According to Redfin, property values in South Shore have already increased by 48% in the past year. South Shore residents need protections to stay in their neighborhood, so that those who have been here can benefit from the Obama Presidential Center. This package of policies are practical, doable, and could immediately be implemented and prevent displacement in South Shore. City council has the means to do so. Thank you all, and go White Sox.
Thank you, Ms. Kajah, for your comments. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
This concludes the public comment period. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, are resolutions. And we have three resolutions today. A memorial resolution for Timmy Black, a congratulatory resolution for Chicago Public School teams and students on their well-earned city championships, and a congratulatory resolution for Chicago Public Schools teams and students who qualified for the Illinois High School Association Championships in a variety of sports. The chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move the temporary suspension of the rules for the immediate consideration of these three resolutions.
I hear no objections, so ordered. First up, ladies and gentlemen, we will honor Timmy Black. With us today in the box is his widow and life mate, Zenobia Black, along with a number of folks who have been supporting Tim Black in his passage from this life to the great beyond. Are there members of the body that wish to speak to this resolution? The chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Madam President. To Zenobia and the Black family, first of all, God bless you, Zenobia, for sharing Mr. Black with us, for caring for him and making sure he made all of the events that he wanted to make around, around the city all the time. So we really appreciate your love and your caring for your husband. You're such a dedicated wife. Tim was such a great guy. He's such a treasure to the city of Chicago and to many African-Americans who didn't and don't know the history of African-Americans here in the city. He's a wealth of information, but also a wealth of inspiration, right? He done seen where we been, and he done seen where we could go, and he would always let folks know what we can do. And, and from his history of seeing things change and seeing people evolve to become leaders in this city, he knows that there's no limit for us if we all work together. So it was just an honor and a pleasure to always be in his presence. I just want to thank you and the family for sharing him with the rest of Chicago. God bless you all.
Thank you, Alderman Burnett. The chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. It goes without saying what he meant to me, but more than anything, Zenobia, what you mean to me. Before even meeting Dr. Black, I met you, and then through meeting you, I got to meet Dr. Black, and then I got a chance to be in his presence and get mentored by him while I was in grad school. He signed my book, Bridges of Memory, and then make, would test me periodically when he saw me. And so my thing is, to be in a room with both him and Reverend Clay Evans at the same time, I never forget. And them dialoguing and the wisdom that I got from both of them at the same time was priceless. But more than anything, what touched my heart is the way you took care of him. That's what touched my heart, every time I saw you all together. And so I love you, you know that without a doubt, and you have great people like Wendy Walker Williams around you that support you and others, and so I just want to let you know I love you and I'm going to keep you lifted in prayer.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. The chair recognizes Alderman.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I echo the words of my colleagues as relates to Mr. Black, to look at the history that he has seen, the history that he's been a part of, and that to know that he is one of the true, I'll call pioneers in civil rights, political rights, political action in our city. It is those type of treasures that our children will read about in our struggles here in the city of Chicago. We just want to thank the family for lending him to us, for the work that he's done, for the lives that he has touched. You don't get a chance to get to be 100-plus years old and at the same time have the richness and greatness and the vivid memories of what happened in the past and as it happened just yesterday. So again, we just want to thank you for sharing him with us and for you for just lending your courage and the work that you continue to do in the community with the Public Housing Museum, and just, just keep going, and we'll keep you in our prayers, and thank you for all the work that Tim and you have done to make this city a better place. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Urban. The chair recognizes Alderwoman here.
Thank you, Madam President. Zenobia, I really want to say this, as a wife and a mom myself, thank you for your leadership, because it's not one event that Mr. Black wanted to go to that you didn't take him. Make sure he was fed before he got there, got on his best suit and his shirt and his tie, and looking all handsome for everybody else. And so I want to say to you that I commend you for that, because that is not easy, being the chauffeur and being the drop-off person and making sure he gets to all his events that he was never late for. So I want to commend you on how well you took care of Mr. Black. You are, and you were a Godsend to him, and so as God gives us mates and partners, you were his other, his better half, if we would say it. But I want to commend him on a life well-lived and well-served. As a historian, he knew more history about black folks than I'll ever know for the rest of my life if I keep living. And so I thank you all and the family and the friends for giving him to Chicago. So Zenobia, I appreciate you in ways that you'll never know, and I thank you for your service aside, serving alongside of your husband. So I want to give you your flowers while you're here, too. And I know that Tim had his opportunity for people to always smother him and cuddle him and tell him how great he was, but I want you to know how great you are. So today, we thank you for your service, and we also want to say that we love Tim. Tim is all-black Chicago, all rolled up into one. So thank you again for allowing him to, as he get, and, as he get, as we all do, get a little older to have a lot of help. So again, I appreciate you, and I thank you for your commitment. And then I do want to say finally that Tim was a great historian. He wrote many, many books, and so the last one I think I read was about the Great Migration of African-Americans from 1933. So again, his life, a wonderful life and a wonderful legacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Harris. The chair recognizes Alderman Dow.
Dow. I said Dow. Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to be associated with this resolution. There's so much that could be said about Dr. Tim Black today, and if we were to really take the time to do that, we would probably be here until sunset. His accomplishments were many, and his influence as a teacher, a college professor, a storyteller, a community organizer, or political activist, a political leader, was felt all over the city. He was my friend. He was a resident of Bronzeville. He was my colleague in community work, especially as a member of the DuSable High School Alumni Association where he rarely missed a meeting. I love listening to his stories of the old Bronzeville. I loved getting his advice as a trusted advisor, his advice on positions I should take, his encouragement as I fought to rehab the Rosenwall Building when there were people in my community telling me that I shouldn't do it, I should tear it down, and his offers to help me on special projects. He was always one, whether he was in my car or in a meeting, to say, now, Pat, if you need me to come help you or may take a position at CPS or something, just let me know, I'll be there. To Zenobia, our beloved Tim is in a better place, and may the Lord continue to give you comfort during this time. And I want you to know that on behalf of the residents of the 3rd Ward, and I speak for everyone there, for everyone there, we thank you for sharing Tim with us, and his contributions to us will be felt for a very long time. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Dow. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harrison.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the City Council. Alderman Dow, do not start the waterworks, please. Please, Zenobia, you know I love you. You know I love Tim. I met you guys when I was an impressionable teenager during the Harold Washington campaign and really sparked my energy, and you all allowed me to be in the room, to soak up all of that knowledge. And there was somebody else that was in the room. There was a young lady by the name of Monica Faith Stewart. Well, I'm back in the impressionable teen years, thank you, and she was doing wonderful things and equally as involved and happens to now be my neighbor. You all were so instrumental in my life from then until now, and the relationship that we shared still continues, the values that we had, the times. I was flipping through some pictures the other day, and I'm like, we had such a good time together, and it was real, and Tim would always sit back, he'd be laid back in the chill, and the magnet that he is, and I'm not just talking about people wanting to come and say how great he was, but people just coming up to Tim because Tim was Tim. And it was always Tim and Zenobia, as if it was one word, and that's how seamless your relationship is, that we all know those people, that they're just one, and that's who you were. But the way in which you all loved each other, the way in which you respected each other, the way in which you gave each other space when they needed, and to let one another shine when it was necessary, that is irreplaceable. And I know that these times are hard, but we are here for you, you know that, and your goddaughter Wendy over there, stop crying. I only got a little bit more to go. In your heart is where you will feel him, and I know the holiday season is going to be different, but as someone who has recently lost her mother, you will feel it, and you will feel him with you every step of the way, and you take that feeling and let it comfort you. God bless, and I love you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Harrison. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spada.
Thank you so much, Chair. I did not know Dr. Black as my colleagues did. I, I only had the opportunity to know him through his speaking, particularly his speaking through events at Friends of the Parks where I was working, and it was really striking to hear him tell stories of the racist history, the sad, I would say racist, history of our park system, the stories of the struggles around segregation at Rainbow Beach. It was powerful. I don't, I've met few people who, when they start speaking, a silence falls over a room like it did when Dr. Black spoke. And there's a sadness to me when we start to lose the people who not only told the stories but who lived the stories. And when I think about him, when I learned of his passing, it felt to me that the best way to honor him was to continue to tell and retell the stories that he shared with us, to continue the fight that was the fight of his life. So I thank you for the way that you supported him in his life's work so that we here could continue to carry on that work for him. Thank you.
I thank you, Alderman Spada. And the Chair recognizes Alderwoman King.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my great honor to stand in, in support of this resolution. While our city lost our great griot, he left us with you, Zenobia, and we all know that you were there with him all the time as a thought partner, as a partner in life, and we appreciate you for that. You know, I'd like to say that I thank you and him for being what I call true public servants. Most people don't know that he ran for Alderman of the 4th Ward, but continued to serve nonetheless and wanted everybody to understand the importance of our history, especially around the Great Migration. I know you remember this, but it was around the celebration around the nineteen nineteen riots, and we asked you and Dr. Black to come speak with some young folks, good kids, mad city, and it had to be at least ninety-something degrees out there, and people canceled, it didn't go, you know, as planned. And so there were just some young people out there, but I remember you and Dr. Black stood there with those kids. Dr. Black was imparting knowledge on them, and those are the types of things that are lasting to me about his service and your service. It could be anyone, and he could walk with kings, but he chose, you know, to walk with the people, and I appreciate that about him and about you. As I thought, sat through his memorial service, I hung on every word that the speakers had to say. It was a great tribute. I hope you feel that it was such. It was a wonderful tribute to him and to you. So I just want to say thank you for sharing him, for sharing yourself. I'm not sure if you will continue to share in that way, but that's obviously your right to do whatever you choose to do, you know, in the next coming years, but want to thank you for the time that you've shared with us and the time that you chose to have Dr. Black share with us. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for this resolution.
Thank you, Alderman King. Any other members of the body who wish to speak to this resolution? I too stand with the entire body of this council to speak on this resolution. I had the esteemed privilege of speaking at Dr. Black's funeral and memorial services, and I'm deeply grateful, Zenobia, for you honoring me with that privilege. I'm honored once again to share my deep appreciation for his service to this country, our state, and of course, to our great city of Chicago, which he loved. I'm especially honored and grateful for the time that I got to spend with Dr. Black. On the night I stepped before the residents of the city as Marilack for the very first time, Tim and Zenobia were both on stage with me cheering me on. And if you were lucky enough to spend time with him, you too got to hear his wise and humorous aphorisms and incredible stories. He had a remarkable memory, great warmth, charisma, and good humor. It's just incredible, given the arc of his life. Though he fought against so many cruel injustices, both away at war, but also here at home. Throughout decades of organizing and activism, he was never hindered or deterred, and he was always optimistic about the possibilities of what could happen. He had an unending resolve and only saw defeat as an opportunity to keep moving and advancing. One week before he passed away, Zenobia invited me to come and be with him one last time. We listened to jazz, one of his great passions. I sat at his feet, and I felt like I was sitting at the feet of a giant, watching him as he came in and out, but I felt like I was there at a very special moment. And I, of course, thought about my dad, who also shared many traits with, with Dr. Black. It was wonderful to be there in that sense of intimacy, and wonderful to share with him and with you and with the friends and family that were gathered. Tim was generally embodiment of what it means to be a lifelong public servant, involved in just about every labor, civil rights, and political justice movement of his lifetime. All the while, he served as a high school history teacher, social worker, professor at our city colleges. It's astounding and really impossible to try to sum up all the marches, political campaigns, and union drives that he helped organize and strategize, as well as the schools where he taught, the institutions he helped to create, and a history book that he wrote. His fight for justice and equality continued until his recent passing. Over a hundred years of living and being of service, no question, our city is truly better because he was here for us and with us. I'm grateful for all the ways in which he passed on his stories and wisdom to the younger generations so that his body of work and his legacy could be carried on. As a Black person in this world, most of us know and can recite by name the giants on whose shoulders we stand, whether they're our mothers or fathers, teachers or pastors, or others who have extended their hand in support to us. We know that we never pass through this world alone. Someone sacrificed in order for us to be here in this moment to try to fulfill our God-given talent. Tim Black was such a person for me, his life's work, especially his work on Harold Washington's historic mayoral campaigns paved the way for somebody named Lori Lightfoot to be standing here today as mayor of this incredible city. His footprints were ahead of me on the path, and he carried a bright lantern as I forged ahead into the unknown. Today, as we remember and honor his life and his achievements with this resolution, let's also make this, ladies and gentlemen, a call to action. Let's commit to picking up the torch that Tim left for all of us to keep working towards our true destiny, which is equity and inclusion, so that no one in our city, no matter what their circumstances, is ever left behind. Let's continuing empowering and inspiring younger generations so that they too can pick up this work when we are past from this life. So Zenobia, I want to also say on a personal note, and I've said this to you privately, I am here for you. We love you deeply. As you've heard from the members of this body have spoken, and I know you know this, you were there for him forty-plus years, his helpmate, his guide, his counsel, and he loved you dearly. And as he loved you, we love you, and we will be here for you. This village that he brought with you today is emblematic of the larger village that is here for you in this incredible moment. There'll be tough times, but know that we stand with you every step of the way. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I request adoption of the resolution by rising vote.
Hear no objections, so. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, is a tradition that I hope we will continue in this body. We are today honoring two sets of CPS sports champions. First up are the CPS citywide champions represented by seniors and captains from the various teams. We've got a group of folks up in 501 who are also watching the livestream. Are there any members of the body that wish to speak to this resolution? Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Madam President. It gives me great pride to be able to talk about two great schools in my ward, Walter Payton and also Whitney Young, but most of all, you know, would always say, it's not the schools that make the young people, it's the young people that make the schools. I like to commend all of the young people, not only for being fantastic, great athletes, but being very smart. They get the highest grades in the state of Illinois. So I want to commend them on dual purposes for being intelligent, but also being some of our best athletes in the city of Chicago and the state of Illinois. Congratulations to you all. You guys make us very proud. I'm sure, you know, you guys live all over the city, but we're proud of you anyhow, and good luck to you, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Alderman Burnett. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman King.
I too want to stand and recognize your great feats. Student athletes are a special part of education, and it's a special part of your life. I also want to acknowledge your coaches. I was a student athlete growing up, and some of my fondest memories or the things that I remember the most are the things that my coaches imparted on me. They're just like an extra hand that you have, and so just want to acknowledge all the, your coaches, I'm sure you appreciate them, but also you as student athletes. Specifically, I've got Kenwood High School and Jones High School represented here, the football team, cross-country team, a swimmer who will probably hear about in the Olympics soon, and I know how hard it is to be a student and an athlete, so my hats are off to you. Congratulations on your great feats and continue to work hard. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderwoman King. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Hadden.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you all for being here today. It's really exciting to see you. Congratulations on your great feats from the 49th Ward in Rogers Park. I know you guys represent residents of all over the city, and I'll say that in addition to everything my colleagues are saying, the fantastic work that you're doing and the accomplishments that you should be proud of, also, I just want to recognize the example that you set for us as well. So in all that you do, as you're growing, as you're learning, as you're striving within your teams, within your schools, and the example that you set for our city, something to be proud of. So thank you for your work, thank you for showing up, thank you for representing our city as well as your schools, and thank you for the example that you set for us.
Thank you, Alderwoman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too rise in support of this resolution. I too was a student athlete like, like you guys, but what I cannot imagine is going through a pandemic as a student athlete, all of the extra time and care and precautions that you have to put in, not to mention all the schoolwork that you have to do, being with your families. So I commend you because it is a, a hard, hard challenge, especially in this day and age, and you all deserve to be commended for your dedication, your commitment, and most of all, your scholarship. So thank you, Madam President, and happy holidays to all of you.
Thank you, Alderman Scott. The Chair recognizes. The chair recognizes Alderman Moore. Now Alderman Moore, there's no Simeon people here, so, all right.
You knew I was about to say that, right? I'm going through here, but it said high school is not an institution, so. But what I do love by coming from Simeon and being able to go to and watch many sports games, I just love high school sports like it's nothing. It's my getaway, and it's pure, but it's also the fact that you all tend to just work together with great leadership for a common cause and trying to not only be victorious on that field or on that court, but also just working together to help one another succeed, continue to do what you do well. Learn from this because these are life lessons that you're learning that's going to take you all the way through life, that teamwork, that togetherness, that hard work. And so I appreciate you all continuing to enjoy, I don't know if it was all seniors here or some juniors, just enjoy high school as much as you can, and then whatever you do into college, enjoy that as well, and have fun while learning. I'm a big fan of tennis. My game is not like it used to be, but I can give you a run, young lady. And I beat, what's her name? What's that Alderman name? Sophia King, for the record. She went to Kenwood, so I beat her in tennis. But you all, make sure, continue to do well, and I just really, congratulations because you're the best of this year. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. Tennis? Okay, all right. What was it, karate or boxing? Oh, okay. And I know he played, Michael played chess. But you guys are, you know, I too was a student athlete, believe it or not, amongst other things. But really, I think that student athletes, you guys have a great role in high school. I remember playing basketball, and I dunked on somebody too in high school, remember that. And again, I want you all to take these great opportunities that you all have had and move on and go to college and do great things with them. You guys have two roles, you're students first and then athletes. And I'm really grateful for the activities that you all have, the teamwork that you all go through, the great camaraderie that you have from any team sport that you all play. Remember those lessons and take them forward as you move into life because we like to argue here and fight and fuss, and it's the teamwork that you all, that we did then, that will help you guys going forward. So please, remember what you all are doing. Also want to give a shout out to the Raiders of Araby from the west side of Chicago, and I did not know that we had golf as a sport in CPS. And so, any golfers here? Any golfers? Okay, so this summer, you got to take us out on the links and show us a few things, but congratulations on the work that you all have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Osterman.
President, I want to start by trying to figure out, as we go to our remap, that Walter Burnett's got Whitney Young and Payton in his ward. We'll have to look at that, but I just want to commend the student athletes today. The folks who are here in the box and the ones that will come down after, they're the captains of their teams, and all of them go to great educational institutions, and while they study and work hard, they're also champions on the fields, and they're leaders within their schools. It's important for us to recognize what these young men and women have gone through for the last two years. Many of them had their junior seasons upturned because of COVID. Many of their former classmates who are in college now didn't get a chance to finish. They've had to go through protocols and practice canceled practices and really hardship that us as adults sometimes forget. But we should give them our utmost respect for their perseverance, not only as athletes but as students. They will all be going on to great colleges and taking with them their experience over the last couple of years, which has given them great strength. We should also commend CPS for, and the people in CPS sports, the coaches, the athletic directors, for making it happen. These young men and women have been playing sports since they were five years old or younger, and many of them will look forward to their junior and senior year to compete and build towards that. CPS and the leadership there and the parent volunteers and everyone that made that happen so that these young men and women, and many of them that are not champions, had a chance to compete. And that made their senior years and junior, sophomore, freshman years a little bit more normal and helped them get through the pandemic that we still live with and are still looking towards the future on. But I want to commend the student athletes here today. I want to recognize Payton School, and I want to recognize Principal Shabazz, who's a new principal there, who brings a great deal of enthusiasm for education as well as athletes and athletics. Payton School has a soccer team that won the city championship, the golf team that won the city championship. In my sport, I'm not going to pretend I was a football player, basketball player, but I was a pretty good 16-inch softball player, but they won the coed 16-inch softball city championship. Want to commend them for what they did, specifically a couple of athletes, Bennett Patterson, who's here today, Blair Warren, Lucas Kozak, and Will Geiger, who represent a number of teams. But want to commend all the athletes that are here today, wish them all the best for the remainder of this year and your success in college, and thank you for being leaders within your schools and within your communities. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Osterman. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President, and good morning, members of the city council. It is with great pleasure that I join you, Madam President, in recognizing our young student champions from CPS here today. I look at the list, you've got tennis, golf, soccer, volleyball, cross-country football, softball, swimming, diving. I could do all of that, but I was never a champion. You are all champions. Your teams are champions, and it is an honor to be here in your presence. You represent the best of what's possible out of our neighborhoods and out of our schools. Hopefully, as you are going forward in life, I know some of my colleagues have said college, some of you may be thinking of joining trades or starting businesses, but my challenge to you would be to use your team-building skills to go for one of the chairs that we have here. You are the leaders that we like seeing coming up. You will be the leaders who replace us one day, and you have the skills in you now as champions to know how to get that done. Could not be prouder to join everyone in seeing and congratulating your success here today. I do want to, of course, give a special shout out to the students from the back of the yards, college prep. They have done our community and my ward proud, so I would be remiss if I did not highlight them today. Yuritni Rubio, Melanie Espin, Lilly Lemus, Emily Perez, Brenda Masias, Emily Moran, Diamond Gallardo, Roxy Herrera, Karen Campos, Damiya Triplet, Isaria Robi, Crystal Solero, Jennifer Robello, Miranda, Aracely Garcia, Alela Granville, Vanessa Vega Zimudio, and Adriana Varela, champions in girls' flag football. And I would bet my money on them against anybody in this room that they would take them out in a competition of their own. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to congratulate all of the student athletes with us today. Congratulations on your success and your commitment to your sport, but I especially want to acknowledge the young men of Phillips High School, our football team, who has brought tremendous pride to the Bronzeville community, especially when we can now drive by the park on Oakwood Boulevard in the fourth ward and see them practicing. So the school's in my ward, the park's in the fourth ward, but we all celebrate the young men of Phillips High School. And if they were here today, we would not be able to do social distancing because there's so many on the team. So I won't read all the names as my colleague Alderman Lopez did, but each one of these students is special, and we want them to know that today. And to Alderman Irvin, I'd like to see you try to dunk on me.
There's a challenge there. There's a challenge. The chair recognizes Alderman Talia Farrow.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of that, in support of this resolution, and I'd like a court-sized seat when Alderman Irvin attempts that dunk. But more specifically, let me congratulate our young athletes and our students on their great accomplishment. I think one of the important things that you can take away from this is not only that you were victorious and that you can be claimed the champion for this year. I think it's also important to take away the value of what it means to work together in order to achieve a common goal, and that's called teamwork. And so I congratulate you on taking one of the basic principles of teamwork and employing it to become champions. And so especially want to acknowledge the students and the champions of Clark Magnet High School. Thank you, Madam President, and I do notice that on one of the resolutions, we have a Lightfoot, a Marquis Lightfoot, maybe some relation to you, but I congratulate all the champions today. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Talia Farrow. The chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
I also stand proudly in support and advocacy for our champions. I want to shout out the schools in the 40th ward, which are Mather, Amundson, and Northside College Prep. I myself, when I was going to high school, was one of those shy, awkward kids that was not able to get involved in sports, and I think I missed out a lot in that experience, the opportunity to build relationships, to find how to work with people, to achieve common goals, to win together. And that's something that I am glad that I've learned in my time here and before, notwithstanding the fact that I wasn't in sports. But to see you all in that position, to be able to learn those lessons while also maintaining your education and making sure you can engage in sports during this pandemic, needs to be commended, and so I want to make sure to say that to you all. I think another thing, and I mentioned some of this earlier when I spoke to some of you all, you know, you all get on the field or on the court or go out in any of those sports to compete and to make sure that you win, and there's a lot of energy behind that. There is sometimes a healthy competition that happens there, but what I appreciate most is that when all the sports are done, you all are able to come together to shake hands because you have a common experience as students, understanding that there is a larger context to that. And so while you are students, you are also teachers, and my hope is that this council and future city councils learn from that lesson because we often get in the mix, and we need to learn at times to be able to shake hands and walk away too. So I thank you all for that, for teaching us, for representing Chicago and all our schools so proudly, and I look forward to backing you up in anything you all need. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Vasquez. The chair recognizes Alderman Sitche Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'd also like to rise in support of this resolution and commend all the champions in public schools and apart districts. I also wanted to share, since this full disclosure, and I think we're putting everything out there, also as a student athlete, I see the benefit of enjoying and being part of the sports as a path forward. As someone who came in at 17 years old, I think that the only way that I had to get to college was through sports, and I think that has to be acknowledged. I think that once we invest in our schools, in our programming, we'll see the talent that our kids have. There's so many, and I want to congratulate all the student athletes here. I cannot imagine what it is to be a student athlete during this pandemic, but I tell you that your effort, your discipline, your team spirit will go a long way in everything that you do. In a world, we have so many great stories that it will be, it'll take too long to say, but to the Juarez Eagles, to the Chargers at Fosco Park in 25th, and so many programs that are really making a difference. We got to be doing a lot more to get our kids engaged in after-school programming and sports. It saves lives. It certainly makes a difference in mine. So certainly, this is a very critical day. Glad to see more young people, youth, in our spaces so that we can hear the success stories and learn that the difference that sports can make in our lives. Thank you so much, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Sitche Lopez. The chair recognizes Alderman Wiegas Beck.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I think playing in basketball and other sports in high school, I know we created the three-point line so that guys like Alderman Irvin wouldn't posterize us every time we went in with a block, with a block, so. But I appreciate you calling us up today, and I absolutely support the efforts of all these kids throughout the last couple of years and throughout this COVID pandemic who continued to work and continue to build character, build their bodies to become great athletes, and hopefully future players in college. But for those who aren't here today, we also congratulate all the students across CPS who were your friends or maybe your foes that didn't quite reach this level but fought just as hard to get here as you are today. And I'd just like to urge us all as a council, I know in the past that we've worked on different facilities to improve our facilities, whether it's for swimming or track and field soccer teams, and continue to build up those and invest in those facilities so that these kids and future kids can continue to thrive in an environment that provides them not just this opportunity, but the facilities and the equipment that they need to compete with our suburban neighbors or other states. So again, I just wish all of you the best, and wherever you end up, whatever you end up doing, that you have a good future ahead of you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Coleman.
Thank you, Madam President. Young people, you all understood the assignment. As my colleagues have said, being the champions, you are the best, and I want to remind you all that you are the best because you represent the city so well. If we listen to the narrative of what other people say about Chicago, I want them to know that we have the champions, and you all are the difference in what's going to turn the city around. Congratulations. As a former high school basketball player, I would dare not challenge Alderman Dow. Unlike Jason, I would dare not challenge you, but congratulations, keep going. Thank you for representing us and making your families, making your principals, making your team players, but making this city proud. God bless you all, and keep going.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Maldonado.
Thank you, Madam President. I stand in support of this resolution, paying tribute to all these athletes from CPS who are here visiting us today. I know how sacrifice it is to be an athlete in any sport in high school. During your respective seasons, you have to be on site at 5:30 in the morning to practice whatever sport you are dedicated to, and then in the afternoon, you practice again, and then waiting for your next meet of whatever sport you're going to play. So it is absolutely sacrifice. You develop a great sense of discipline, and that is why most of you will end up with good scholarships, academic scholarships, that would allow you also to play sports at the universities of your choice as you move forward toward that new phase in your life. So congratulations to all of you, and I truly, truly, truly admire each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other members of the body that wish to speak to this resolution? I also stand with the entire body of this council to speak to this resolution. We know the accolades of CPS academic achievements, rising graduation rates, the rising number of students earning scholarships and attending college, and their national blue ribbon recognitions. But this year, we once again saw CPS's athletic prowess on full display. Each year, CPS athletes compete in a variety of athletic competitions with the goal of winning the Chicago Public League. Bowing hard-fought seasons, the Chicago Public League crowned 11 champions, crowned champions in 11 different sports across seven CPS high schools, from football, swimming, and cross-country, softball, golf, volleyball, and soccer. These students showed agility, speed, flexibility, and endurance in their competition, both on and off the field. speed, flexibility, and endurance in their competition. Both on and off the fields, they exemplify discipline, determination, and a fierce competitive drive. With their fellow teammates and coaches, they share camaraderie and uphold the spirit of teamwork that should inspire us all, and I hope it does. Each of you, together and in your own way, represent the best of what CPS schools have to offer, but I would say, offer the best of what the city has to offer. And we salute you. I'm sure you all know by now the tremendous benefits of competing and athleticism in school. You learn how far you can go physically, while learning the importance of responsibility, time management, taking care of your health. You learn the lessons of committing to sweat and tears and time to achieve success. These qualities prepare you perfectly for college, for career, for your life. The future of our city is in your great hands because of what you are accomplishing in leadership that you are showing. Perhaps you're even future Olympians or the future stars of our Chicago sports teams in this room with us today. Your achievements make not only your loved ones, your schools, your district, but your entire city proud, which is why we wanted to bring you here to highlight your achievements. As a huge sportsman myself, and I will also say I was a hacker in basketball, in track, and softball in high school, let me also just say, I congratulate you one and all for your championships. And members of the media, report this story. Talk about our young people. Talk about how they are achieving. Don't do a "I don't have any on-topic" questions. Tell these stories because these kids are doing it under great odds, and they need our recognition and our support. So please, tell that story. Now, I will say, it was great to meet you all this morning for pictures, even though they made me stand next to the young woman who's 6'2" down there on the end representing volleyball. But it's great to have you here. Blessings and Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. Thank you all. All right, next up, we have, oh, Alderman Mitchell, sorry.
Got one more, don't you?
Okay. Are you going to move both at the same time? You'll move both at the same time? Okay. We'll wait till the next one and we can move both at the same time, Alderman? Okay. Next up, we have the CPS champions who made it downstate, as we used to say. Come on in. All right, any members of the body that wish to speak to these champions? Somebody break the ice for me. Alderman Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to congratulate you young people on your efforts. Like many of the colleagues said, and for those who were not here last time, it is just so difficult to be a student athlete, especially in this day and time. Just really wanted to commend you for all your hard work, all your practice, all your preparation. And I've seen a bunch of Whitney Young folks there, and I just wanted to congratulate all those Whitney Young people. I was a Dolphin at one time, and I know that Whitney Young is a school of champions. And then I also wanted to just rebut Alderman Irvin, the dunking Alderman Irvin. It was football, not chess, my friend. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
It's Madam President. How this Dolphin transformed into an Alderman, I will never know. Amazing. But thank you so much for being with us. My high school athletic career could only be described as cataclysmic to embarrassing. So very, very grateful to have you all with us. And thank you so much. You really do your city proud, and hopefully the skills, the endurance, the patience, the leadership that you're developing on your teams are going to translate to you not sitting in those seats, but sitting in these seats in the future. We're gonna need you. The city is going to need you. So thank you for what you're accomplishing now and what you're going to accomplish in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. And the Chair recognizes Alderman Rosa.
Madam Chair, I too rise to wish a hearty congratulations to our CPS students, to our athletes. You have made the entire city of Chicago proud. I know you've made your schools proud. You know, I was not a student athlete, but I was in student government. And Dr. Kenner, who I'm sure you know very well as a Whitney Young student, she used to have us decorate the auditoriums every single time that a team would go downstate, which meant that I was decorating the auditorium all the time as a student government member. But I want to say that, you know, this is just the beginning. You have your whole life ahead of you. So continue to work hard, continue to practice, continue to give it ganas, as we say in Spanish. We're so proud of you, and we know that the best is yet to come. Congratulations.
Thank you, Alderman Rosa. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Nitz.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I too rise to support the resolution and just to encourage our young peoples to continue the athletics. I think that's going to play into your life. Competition is good. For many challenges that you have, they let you know you can win some and you can lose some. And I think that you all are winners, so you know what it takes to win, and you have to keep that fight in you each and every day and never give up. That's why you're a champion. So congratulations to each and every one of you. Wishing you much success as you continue to move forward in your career and in your life. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Nitz. Anybody else? Yes, Alderman King.
Want to stand again and recognize, before we're recognizing some team sports, and we had Kenwood Football in here and Jones Cross Country, but now I'd like to specifically recognize a Kenwood student, Isabella Crowe, who was a finalist for swimming. Raise your hand. Yeah, I'm gonna call you out. That individual sport, swimming, tough sport. So just want to recognize that achievement. I know you train hard, so just want to congratulate you and encourage you to continue to work hard. And look at this girl because she may be in the Olympics someday. So look at her hard, but congratulations.
Thank you, Alderwoman King. I also stand with the entire body in support of this resolution as well. Today, we had the opportunity to support our young people, not just with one group of student athletes, but with two. Each year CPS athletes compete in a variety of athletic competitions with the goal of qualifying for the Illinois High School Association, or IHSA championships. Students fought hard, played amazingly well throughout their season. And we saw a record number of CPS students and teams qualifying for the Downstate Championship across our high schools, in soccer, football, tennis, swimming, and diving, cross-country, golf, track and field. And these students showed fierce competition and competitive drive to get to this next level. And to think that just last year in 2020, it was so uncertain as to whether or not these competitions could even proceed. And while in-person learning was transitioned to remote, students' willingness and commitment to playing sports were at all times high. And we had to make decisions that prioritize safety, of course. And it was devastating to many on and off the field when sports were deemed unsafe in the early days of the pandemic. So I am thrilled that we're in a different direction, improved this year, and our young people can get on the field, get in the pool, on the court, and compete. These young athletes clearly didn't miss a beat. You've made CPS and our entire city immensely proud. And by competing at the state level, you are representing the excellence of Chicago and sharing it across our region and our state. You're an integral component to showing those outside of our city how high-quality and successful our young people are and the schools that they represent. So I consider each of you a partner in our efforts. To exemplify the best of the schools in the nation can be found right here in the city of Chicago. You've, I hope the lessons that you've learned through competition and being with your teammates and the friends that you've made along the way carry you into life. They're important lessons. You're now skilled in both athleticism and the skills of time management, responsibility, and dependability. I can't wait to see what your future holds for you. And I do hope that we'll be remembering someday soon, oh yes, they were here as future Olympians. But whatever your life's journeys take you, we thank you, we commend you, we support you, and we are so immensely proud of everything that you've accomplished. So congratulations once again. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move passage of these two championship resolutions in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. And before we move on to the next item of business, there are some members that I believe joined us after we took the quorum call. Alderman Moore is present. Alderman Curtis is present. Alderman Mitchell, Alderman Taylor, Alderman Coleman, Alderman Rodriguez, Alderman Burke, and Alderman Maldonado. And Alderman Sawyer, Alderman Riley as well. Thank you. All right.
Madam President, I move that we return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, our communications. Madam Clerk.
Communications from our Honored the Mayor, the Honorable the City Council of the City of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Department of Housing, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the issuance of up to $46 million in housing revenue bonds for acquisition and rehabilitation of the Barbara Jean Wright apartment. If favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, referred to Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Housing, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the continuation of the single-family mortgage credit certificate program. If favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, referred to Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Department of Housing, I transmit herewith, together with Alderman Mitchell, an ordinance authorizing the establishment of a debt waiver program for the purpose of community revitalization. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, referred to Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith ordinances authorizing the execution of intergovernmental agreements with the Chicago Board of Education to provide TIF funding for improvements of various elementary schools. If favorable consideration of this ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, referred to Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Budget Director, I transmit herewith an ordinance amending the 2021 budget ordinance. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, referred to Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit herewith, together with City Clerk Valencia and Alderman Harris, a resolution amending the rules of order and procedure of the City Council to implement electronic voting. Your favorable consideration of this resolution will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, referred to Committee on Rules and Committee on Committee and Rules. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing a Class C renewal tax status for a property located at 4535 West Armitage Avenue. If favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, referred to Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Public Health, I transmit herewith an ordinance amending the municipal code to regulate default beverages presented with children's meals by restaurants. Your favorite consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Housing, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the sale of seven city-owned parcels to Prodigy LLC. If favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, referred to Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith ordinances authorizing the sale of city-owned property. If favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, referred to Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Housing, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the transfer of a project, associated property from North Center Senior Housing LP to Martha HHDC LLC. If favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, referred to Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Business Affairs and Consumer Protection, I transmit herewith, together with Alderman Harrison, an ordinance amending the municipal code to enhance the regulation of second-hand dealers and pawnbrokers. If favorable consideration of these ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Interim Chief Administrator of the Civilian Office of Police Accountability, I transmit herewith an ordinance amending the municipal code regarding the authority of the Civilian Office of Police Accountability. If favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, referred to Committee on Public Safety. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the expenditure of open space impact fee funds to reimburse Chicago public schools for improvements at Askermeyer Magnet School. If favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, referred to Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Buildings, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the municipal code to make technical corrections adjustments to Chicago construction codes. If favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, referred to Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit herewith appointments to various special service areas. If favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, referred to Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to Chicago Commission on Human Relations. If favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. I, City Clerk Anna Valencia, hereby inform the City Council that the following documents were filed in my office relating to the respective subjects designated as follows. Mayoral Executive Order Number 2021-3, establishing interagency reentry council and committee on committees and roles draft map concerning redistricting of the City of Chicago wards, Office Inspector General's follow-up audit report of Chicago Police Department, Department of Family and Support Services Administration of Juvenile Intervention and Support Center, and Office Inspector General's follow-up audit report on Department of Public Health's data, privacy, and cybersecurity involving COVID-19 contract tracing program. I, City Clerk Valencia, also inform the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on November 17, 2021, and were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form, or in one or more newspapers were published in pamphlet form on December 15, 2021, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal Proceedings of the City Council, City of Chicago. I also inform the City Council that the call for the special meeting and the matter considered by the City Council on December 1, 2021, were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form, or in one or more newspapers were published in pamphlet form on December 15, 2021, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies on the Journal Proceedings of the City Council, City of Chicago. I, City Clerk Valencia, also inform the City Council that the ordinance is authorized in the imposition of a tax levy approval of the year 2022 budget and execution of service provider agreement for special service area numbers 3, 8, 17, 25, 27, 28, -2014, 33, 35, -2015, 44, 48, 59, and 71, which were passed by the City Council November 17, 2021, and which were requested to be published in special pamphlet, published in special pamphlet form on November 29 and 30, 2021. I, City Clerk Valencia, also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications reports requiring City Council action. Zoning reclassifications of particular areas referred to Committee on zoning landmarks and building standards, and claims against the City of Chicago referred to the Committee on Finance. Amendment of municipal code, Chapter 2-8, concerning redistricting of the City of Chicago wards, which referred to the Committee on Committees and Roles, submitted by the Chicago Advisory District Commission, recommendation by Commission on Chicago Landmarks for designation of Little Village Arch at 3100 West 26th Street as Chicago Landmark, which is referred to Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Your Honor, that concludes communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next up, the agreed calendar. Alderman Harris. I apologize. Next up, committee reports. I was ahead of myself. Or that we could skip them, I suppose. Maybe not. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Next up, committee reports. Committee on Finance, Chairman Waguesback.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which met on Monday, December 13, 2021. Item number one is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to to amend the 35th and Halsted Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan, Project, and Ordinance for Conformity and Compliance with Illinois State Law Setting a 35-year limit on retirement of obligations. The item received favorable approval by the committee, and if no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move to concur with the recommendation of the committee by a roll call vote.
Madam Clerk.
Alderman Lasfatta. Alderman Lasfatta is a yes. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Hopkins is a yes. Alderman Dow. Dow is a yes. Alderman King. Alderman Harrison. Harrison is a yes. Alderman Sawyer. Sawyer is a yes. Alderman Mitchell. Mitchell is a yes. Alderman Harris. Harris is a yes. Alderman Beal. Beal is a yes. Alderman Zloski Garza. Zloski Garza is a yes. Alderman Thompson. Thompson is a yes. Alderman Cardness. Cardness is a yes. Alderman Quinn. Quinn is a yes. Alderman Burke. Burke is a yes. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Coleman. Coleman is a yes. Alderman Moore. Alderman Moore. Moore is a yes. Alderman Curtis. Curtis is a yes. Alderman O'Shea. O'Shea is a yes. Alderman Taylor. Taylor is a yes. Alderman Brookins. Brookins is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez. Rodriguez is a yes. Alderman Tabarez. Tabarez is a yes. Alderman Scott. Scott is a yes. Alderman Sichu Lopez. Alderman Maldonado. Maldonado is a yes. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Irvin. Our Irvin is a yes. Alderman Talafaro. Talafaro is a yes. Alderman Raboyas. Raboyas is a yes. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Waggisback. Waggisback is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderman Austin. Austin is a yes. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Ramirez Rosa is a yes. Alderman Vegas. Vegas is a yes. Alderman Mitz. Mitz is a yes. Alderman Spazado. Alderman Nugent. Nugent is a yes. Alderman Vasquez. Vasquez is a yes. Alderman Napolitano. Napolitano is a yes. Alderman Riley. Riley is a yes. Alderman Smith. Smith is a yes. Alderman Tunny. Tunny is a yes. Alderman Gardner. Gardner is a yes. Alderman Kapelman. Kapelman is a yes. Alderman Martin. Martin is a yes. Alderman Osterman. Alderman Osterman. Osterman is a yes. Alderman Haddon. Haddon is a yes. Alderman Silverstein. Silverstein is a yes. Alderman Burnett is a yes. Alderman King is a yes. Sichu Lopez is a yes. Alderman Lopez is a yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Are the ayes are 48, the nays are zero? Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to reconsider the last vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay. The nays have it. The motion for reconsideration is denied. Chairman Waggisback.
Thank you, Madam President. Item number two is a communication recommending an independent audit of Deloitte and Touche and a consortium of minority and women-owned accounting firms to perform the audit for the City of Chicago fiscal year ending December 31, 2021. This item received favorable approval by the committee, and if no one wishes to speak on the matter, this item will be placed on file with the clerk. Madam President, sorry, I thought there was a couple people that were going to speak to it, but.
You know, hands being raised.
Thank you. Item number three is regarding monthly settlements through the Law Department and will be placed on file with the clerk. Items four and five consist of authorizations for the payment of various small claims against the city and the denials of payment of various small claims against the city. If there's no objection, I ask that these items be placed on the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item six consists of one order authorizing two tag day permits for Children's International and Greenpeace USA. If there's no objection, I ask that these items be placed on the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And item seven consists of four orders authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute settlement agreements. The first item is item 7A. This is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement agreement in the case of Lawrence Scott versus City of Chicago in the amount of $625,000. The item did receive favorable approval by the committee, and with the exception of Alderman Tabar- Alderman Tabarez, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
The chair recognizes Alderman Quinn.
We record this now.
Chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
President, I'd like to be recorded as a no as well.
The chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
As well.
Okay. So we have Alderman Riley.
Record as a no as well.
All right, all those will be reflected. The chair recognizes Alderman Burke.
Madam President, I'd like to be recorded as voting no also.
Okay. The record will be still reflected. Alderwoman Smith.
Be recorded as voting no on this? Thank you.
Alderwoman Smith is also voting no. Any others? With those no votes recorded, hearing no objection, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. My apologies, I actually had the list there. That was my next step there. But moving on to item 7B is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement agreement in the case of Frederick Bell versus City of Chicago in the amount of $330,000. This item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 7C is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement agreement in the case of Pedro Rios versus the City of Chicago in the amount of $1.2 million. While the item received favorable approval by the committee, unless no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by a roll call vote.
The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President, and again, good morning, members of the City Council. It seems more and more we have these types of lawsuits where we are again paying for the bad lifestyle choices of individuals in the city of Chicago. This young man was missing by his family for weeks. This young man was a known gang banger. This young man was shooting at police. And this young man lost his life because the police returned fire trying to protect their own life. I know, as I've heard from our legal team, that we need to take the emotion out of it, that we need to take this at face value to protect taxpayers. We've had this conversation. We've seen these settlements, and I will continue to raise the alarm that we are doing nothing more than rewarding bad behavior. We have to, as a body, at some point, say enough. This is not a lottery. This is not a game. These are peoples whose decisions are costing our taxpayers millions of dollars while they have led a life terrorizing our communities. Enough. And while I don't think we'll win the day today, that needs to be what's on the back of our minds moving forward, and I encourage all of my colleagues to join me in voting no on this settlement. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The life loss is a life loss, and while people are entitled to mistakes, we are quick to point out what young people do, but the officer who was settling this suit has five other cases against him that the city has paid for, and so I agree that we got to do something different, but all parties involved have to be called out when it comes to the things that happen in City Council. And like Alderman Lopez, I'm tired of paying lawsuits too. That's on us as taxpayers to pay for lawsuits, and there's no real change happening in the city, and so having to pay these families is nothing any of us want to do, but no amount of money will bring these lives back. But it's our responsibility and duty to say, we will pay no more money without some real change, and that's on both sides. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Chair, Taylor. The chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to speak on this matter. It's unfortunate when any child, and we're talking a 14-year-old, has to die, especially in situations like the one we find ourselves. I think it's really, people like to talk about choices and responsibility, and we need to think about the choices and responsibility we have as a council to create the kind of city where we don't have the environments that lead to children having to make decisions like this. We have a city that for 100 years, we know, has been segregated through racial lens, has been disinvested in certain communities, and then when we don't have education, job opportunities, a neighborhood that feels safe, or any kind of support system, and we find children who are lost in that kind of environment, it is very quick for us to point out and say, oh, that person made a decision, or what about their parents? We know through a pandemic, people can't even pay their bills now, but even prior to that, we've had that as a city. So we can talk about responsibility, but let's not forget the responsibility of ourselves here in council elected to make sure we create a better city, where that's not the case, rather than pointing the finger at people who are succumbing to those environments because we haven't done our job. So I appreciate the concerns. We all are concerned about our public safety. We know in the times that we're going through, we all have to talk about it, but if we don't address the root cause of what causes some of the kids to fall into these lifestyles, we're never solving it, and we know we don't have enough officers to contain the problem. So with all the passion that people love to talk about personal responsibility and choices, I hope we have the same amount of passion to actually change our city so we no longer have to see those kind of results. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with everything that's been said here, but I asked this question before. Who is going to pay if we want to roll the dice? Heard anybody say, hey, I'll pay if we're selling for 1.2 million if it goes to 3 million. Who's going to pay the difference? I hear no one saying that raising their hand, say, hey, I want to pay the million dollars in attorney's fees on top of whatever judgment is handed down. I think we employ folks, Corporation Council and the team to do the best that they can given these situations, and we've got to, if we don't want to listen to their judgment, then we need to do something different. I agree, we do need to be thinking about our risk management practices and what we can do to make changes, and I think that we've started with workers' comp and done some other things. I think we will get there in time, but we cannot take this attitude, this cavalier attitude, especially when it's not coming out of your pocket. Again, I'm asking, would somebody raise their hand that wants to pay the bill when it goes south? I'm waiting. I thought not. I think that these settlements, while they are challenging, and we understand we've got fundamental issues to deal with, we still need to move forward and settle these cases as we can, because again, under the way the 1983 claims work, you can have a bill, legal bill judgment for a million, million-two, plus on top of whatever the pain and suffering and other damages that may exist. So while these are not ideal things, these are cost-effectively in the best interest of the city to do, and we have to remember that responsibility. We signed up for that too. Yes, we want to make policy changes. Yes, we want to do some other things, but we have to be fiscally sound and prudent in what we do. Now, I stand and want to do risk management and other practices to reduce this liability, but today, we got to solve this challenge, and saying no just for the symbolic sake of saying no is not going to help us solve these challenges and problems. It's going to be us working together, looking at how we can mitigate the risk for our officers, for our young people, for everyone, so we do not find ourselves in these situations. So I do encourage us to think, using some logic on some of this stuff, and not get caught up in the emotions of this. While we all need to work to make this situation better, we do need to handle the obligation that we have today. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. Chairman Waggisback, back to you.
Thank you, Madam President, and I appreciate the comments of everyone here today. I just want to correct the record that we had no evidence of a shooting or shots fired by the deceased Rios. So with that, I will restate my motion.
If I may, Alderman, just a point of clarification. This was a 14-year-old boy, correct?
Yes.
And he was, I think the evidence demonstrates that he was running away from the police?
Yes.
And my understanding is the officer is seen on video after the shots are fired and the boy is down, kicking him in the head?
There's, yes, for the record, yes.
Thank you. I think we have a request for a roll call.
So, yes, Madam President, I just restate my motion for a roll call vote.
Alderman Lasfatta. Alderman Lasfatta is a yes. Alderman Hopkins. Hopkins is a yes. Alderman Dow. Dow is a yes. Alderman King. King is a yes. Alderman Harrison. Harrison is a yes. Alderman Sawyer. Sawyer is a yes. Alderman Mitchell. Mitchell is a yes. Alderman Harris. Harris is a yes. Alderman Beal. Beal is a yes. Alderman Zloski Garza. Zloski Garza is a yes. Alderman Thompson. Thompson is a yes. Alderman Cardness. Cardness is a yes. Alderman Quinn. Quinn is a no. Alderman Burke. Burke is a no. Alderman Lopez. Lopez is a no. Alderman Coleman. Coleman is a yes. Alderman Moore. Moore is a yes. Alderman Curtis. Curtis is a no. Alderman O'Shea. O'Shea is a no. Alderman Taylor. Taylor is a yes. Alderman Brookins. Brookins is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez. Rodriguez is a yes. Alderman Tabarez. Tabarez is a no. Alderman Scott. Scott is a yes. Alderman Sichu Lopez. Sichu Lopez is a yes. Alderman Maldonado. Maldonado is a yes. Alderman Burnett. Burnett is a yes. Alderman Irvin. Irvin is a yes. Alderman Talafaro. Talafaro is a yes. Alderman Raboyas. Raboyas is a no. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Waggisback. Waggisback is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderman Austin. Austin is a yes. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Ramirez Rosa is a yes. Alderman Vegas. Vegas is a yes. Alderman Mitz. Mitz is a yes. Alderman Spazado. Alderman Nugent. Nugent is a no. Alderman Vasquez. Vasquez is a yes. Alderman Napolitano.[1663.76] Alderman Apolitano. Apolitano is a no. Alderman Riley. Riley is a no. Alderman Smith. Smith is a yes. Alderman Tunny. Tunny is a yes. Alderman Gardner. Gardner is a no. Alderman Capelman. Capelman is a yes. Alderman Martin. Martin is a yes. Alderman Osterman. Osterman is a yes. Alderman Haddon. Haddon is a yes. Alderman Silverstein. Silverstein is a no.
The yays are 36, the nays are 12. The motion passes Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
I move to reconsider that vote, Madam President.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay. The nays have it. The motion for reconsideration fail. Chairman Wegasback, back to you.
Thank you, Madam President. Moving on to item 7D. This is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement agreement in the case of Anjanet Young versus City of Chicago in the amount of $2.9 million. This item received favorable approval by the committee, and I believe there are people who wish to speak to it. But after discussion, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance for corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
The Chair recognizes older woman Haddon.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Chairman Wagaspak. The, it is, glad that we reached a settlement in this agreement. I'll keep it brief, but we've just had some discussion about responsibility, about the type of city that we want to be. That's been a lot of what we've talked about, actually, over this entire week. And moving forward, we are responsible for so many of the reforms and changes that we want to see. We have a lot of bad things that happen, some things that are illegal. We've got people, though, within our charge in our city that we're also responsible for. Employees of our city, whether they be in the police department or in other departments, that we're responsible for. It's our job to make sure that we're raising the standard, that we're encouraging, urging, and pushing ourselves and our city to be better. I want to commend Ms. Young for her courage in bringing this forward and working so hard. The settlement and the legal pieces is something that we're doing to hold up our end of the responsibility of admitting that we were wrong, that our city did something wrong. The work that we have to do in council and continue to do is to fix the system, fix the process, and fix the policies so that we don't keep making the same mistakes. So, Madam President, and Saleah, thank you to our Law Department for making right and moving this forward. I'm glad that we're closing this out. I'm glad that we've reached agreement. And I know that here in this council, in this body, we're going to keep working to push our city to be better, to fix our policies and our practices, so that we don't, we're not here again with another resident, you know, in six months or eight months. So I appreciate everybody who worked on this, and I want to thank Ms. Young for her courage in standing up for what was right and helping us to be better as a city. Thank you.
Thank you, older woman Taylor, or Haddon. Chair recognizes older woman Taylor.
$2.9 million may seem like a lot, but it will never give Ms. Young back her dignity and respect and the trust that she's lost for the people that she loves and respects in this city. I do thank you all for settling this, despite all the ups and downs. Ms. Young is a black woman who was doing what was right. And despite that, she still has this that she will carry around for the rest of her life. One of the things I remember her saying was it wasn't just about money, it was about change and policy. And so while we're settling with her, and I'm grateful for that, I hope that we hear her and not hear her to answer, but actually hear her to listen, to say, let's do something different about how we do house raising, how we treat women, how we treat young people, because that's all an issue in the city. And so I give respect where respect is due, Councilwoman. Thank you. I know this could have went totally different, and it's been a struggle. And we still have work to do as a city, because while we're settling lawsuits, the people in our city expect us to fix it, and they all are hurt. And so I'll end by saying this. Ms. Young wasn't the first, and I pray to God that she is the last. But in between time, let's do the right thing as a council. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other members of the body wish to speak for this matter? Chairman Wegasback.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll just state that I appreciate all the members of this body who were attentive during the briefing and the hearing, and thank the Corporation Council for the details about what happened here so that Aldermen were aware and ready to vote as they have today. So thank you to all the members and to Corp. Counsel. So restating my motion, I move that we pass this by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
And, Madam President, this concludes the report of the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Chairman Wegasback. Next up, the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Chairwoman Dow.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on the Budget and Government Operations, which held a meeting on December 8th and reconvened on December 10th, 2021. The Committee recommends passage of the following items. Number one, transfer of funds within the City Council Committee on the Budget and Government Operations for year 2021. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Two, an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the contract with the Resurrection Project regarding case management services for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Three, a substitute ordinance amending Section 2-92-644 of the Municipal Code Regarding Emergency Procurement. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection, with the exception of Alderman Tabarez, who wants to be recorded as a no vote.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Madam President, me and Alderman Lopez moved to defer and publish this item.
The matter will be deferred.
Moving on, on December 8th, 2021, the Committee held subject matter hearings regarding the third quarter update on the fiscal year 2021 annual appropriation and regarding the Foreign Fire Insurance Board's expenditures from the Foreign Fire Insurance Tax Fund. No votes were taken as this was a subject matter hearing. This concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman Dow. Next up, Committee on Committees and Rules. Chairman Harris.
Good morning, Madam President, and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committees on Committees Rules, which met on Tuesday, October 12th. The Committee recommends the following rereferals. The Committee recommends that Item 1 be referred to the Committee on Finance. Item 1 is 020211227, Amendment of the Municipal Code, Chapters 9-100 and 9-101, to further regulate automated speed enforcement systems, be re-referred to the Committee on Finance. I move approval of this recommendation of this item. One be re-referred to the Committee on Finance by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committees on Finance and an association motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
The Committee recommends that Item 2 be re-referred to the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. The item is as follows. Item 2, 02021-2901, Amendment of the Municipal Code, Chapter 2-60, by adding new Section 2-60090 to establish the position of Legislative Council. I move that, move the approval of the recommendation of this item be re-referred to the Committee on Budget and Government Operations by the first most favorable roll call of the vote on Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
No objections.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Next up, the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Chairman Vegas.
President, members of the City Council, reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. On Wednesday, December 8th, 2021, the Committee held a virtual meeting and recommends passage of the following items. Items 1 and 2 is a reappointment and appointment collectively voted for the following special service area. Reappointment of Sarah J. Blackstone Lukens to SSA number 54, Sheridan Road Commission, located in the 49th Ward. Appointment of Angelica Marks to SSA number 61, Hyde Park Commission, located in the 4th and 5th Wards. I move passage for these items by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Item 3 is an ordinance for a Class 6B tax incentive renewal for property located at 815 West Pershing Road in the 11th Ward, introduced by Mayor Leiford on November 17th, 2021 City Council. I move passage for this item by the same motion.
Objection, so ordered.
Item 4 is an ordinance for a Class 7A tax incentive for property located at 4401 West Division Street in the 37th Ward. I move passage for this item by the same roll call, by the same motion, rather.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Item 5 is an ordinance for a Class 7A tax incentive for property located at 838 to 840 East 87th Street in the 8th Ward. I move for the passage of this item by the same motion.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Item 6 is an ordinance for a Class 7A tax incentive for property located at 1050 to 1052 West Wilson Avenue in the 46th Ward. I move for passage of this item by the same motion.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Item 7 is a substitute ordinance for the establishment and authorization of the levy of a special annual services tax for special services for SSA number 76, North Michigan Avenue, located in the 2nd and 42nd Wards. The Committee received a substitute ordinance from the City of Chicago Department of Planning, which was then circulated to the Committee members for review prior to December 8th meeting and vote. I move for the passage of this item by the same motion.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Items 8 through 12 are a series of ordinance calling for the establishment, enlargement, and/or extension of various SSAs and the authorization of the levy of the special annual services tax. SSA number 60, Albany Park, located in 33rd and 35th Wards. SSA number 52-2021, 51st Street, located in the 3rd Ward. SSA number 55, 111th Kedzie, located in 19th Ward. SSA number 23, Clark Street, Lincoln Park, located in the 43rd Ward. SSA number 77, West Garfield, located in the 28th Ward. I move for passage of this item by the same motion.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Item 13 is a corrected ordinance for the establishment and authorization levy of special annual services tax of certain special services for SSA number 79, Lawrence Pulaski Elston, located in the 39th Ward. The Committee received a corrected ordinance from the City of Chicago Department of Law, which was then circulated to the Committee members for review prior to the December 8th meeting and passage. I move for passage of this item by the same motion.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Items 14 through 31 are a series of ordinances for the tax levy, scope of services, and budget and management agreements for various SSAs introduced by Mayor Leiford on November 17th, 2021 City Council. SSA number 64, Walden Parkway, located in the 19th Ward. SSA number 73, Chinatown, located in the 25th Ward. SSA number 1-2015, State Street, located in the 4th and 42nd Wards. SSA number 10, Back of the Yards, located in 11, 12, 15, and 20th Wards. SSA 13, Stockyards, located in the 3rd, 11, 12, 20th Wards. SSA number 18, North Houston, located in the 44th and 46th Wards. SSA number 29-2014, West Town, located in the 1st, 2nd, and 27th Wards. SSA number 31, Rita Ravenswood, located in the 40th, 46th, and 47th Wards. SSA number 47, Cottage Grove, located in 4th Ward. SSA number 50, Talium Heights Avalon, located in 8th Ward. SSA number 56, Bronzeville, located in the 3rd Ward. SSA number 69, 95th Ashland, located in the 21st Ward. SSA number 7, Kedzie Industrial Track, located in the 14th Ward. SSA number 39, Brighton Archer, located in the 12th, 14th, and 15th Wards. SSA number 51, Chatham, located in the 6th and 8th Wards. SSA number 63, West Humble Park, located in the 27th and 37th Wards. Village Austin, Chicago Cultural Corridor, located in the 28th and 37th Wards. SSA number 42, 71st Stony Island, located in the 5th, 7th, and 8th Wards. I move for passage of these items by the same motion.
There are no objections, so ordered.
On Tuesday, December 14th, 2021, the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development reconvened following the recess meeting on December 8th, 2021. The Committee recommends passage of an ordinance for the tax levy, scope of services, and budget and management agreements for SSA number 32, 79th Street, located in the 17th and 21st Wards, introduced by Mayor Leiford on November 17th, City Council. I move for passage of this item by the same motion.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report.
The Chair recognizes Chairman Harris on the Committee on Committees and Rules.
Madam President, I'd like to read the correct report. Reporting for your Committees on Committee Rules, which met on Tuesday, December 14th, the Committee recommends the following approval and rereferals. The Committee recommends approval of Item 2 and 3, Journal Corrections of September 14th and October 14th of 2021 by the first most favorable roll call of Finance. An unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
The Committee recommends that Items 4 be re-referred to the Committee on Finance, which is as follows. Item 4, R2021-1301, Resolution on Commissioning of a Feasibility Study Regarding the City of Chicago on Purchase in a Chicago Bears Franchise. I move approval of the recommendation of Item 4 be re-referred to the Committee on Finance by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Ethics and Government on the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
The Committee recommends that Item 5 be re-referred to the Committee on Public Safety. The item is as follows. Item 5, A2021-172, Appointment of Andrea Kerstin as the Chief Administrator of the Civilian Office of Police Accountability. I move approval of the recommendation that Item 5 be re-referred to the Committee on Public Safety by the first most favorable roll call vote of Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Thank you.
Next up, Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight. Chairman Smith.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Madam President and members of City Council, reporting for your Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight, which held a meeting on December 14th, 2021. The Committee considered and recommends passage of one item, the appointment of Ryan Z. Kordazar as a member of the Board of Ethics. I move passage of this appointment by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Committee on Housing and Real Estate, Chairman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which held a remote meeting on December 2nd, 2021. The Committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following. Item number one is a lease agreement with Hastings Center Office LLC for use of office space at 1340 South Damon. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Item number two is the sale of vacant, as-is, city-owned property at 5093 West Jackson Boulevard to Chicago Jesuit Academy, subject to certain transfer conditions. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Item number three is the sale of city-owned vacant property at 5113 Vacant Street to Expert Management, Inc., subject to no further remediation letter with subsequent transfer to the North Austin Community Center. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Item number four is an ordinance containing amendments and revisions to redevelopment agreement at KMW Communities LLC regarding environmental remediation and the establishment of escrow account and affordable residential requirements. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Osterman. Next up, the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Chairman Mitz.
Madam President and members of the City Council, I'm reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. We held a virtual meeting on December 8th, 2021, and the following items was passed by the Committee. Item number 8, 2021-171, A Communication Appointing Ken Myers as Commissioner of Business Affairs and Consumer Protection. Madam President, as of today, Mr. Myers is present with his mother, Eileen Myers', sister, Julian Delaman, niece, Lindsey Burns, and also another niece, Jenny Burns, nephew, Matthew Burns. Ken has two other sisters, Ann Myers and Mari Longard, who weren't able to make it today, but are very proud of him. And finally, his father, who passed away in April of 2021, but would be very proud of Ken if he were here on this special day. Madam President, if no, I would reserve the right to close if anyone wanted to speak on this item.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Sawyer.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise in support of this appointment. Ken is no stranger to us, but I have to tell you that, Ken, I'm not supporting you just because of you. I'm supporting you because your mother was a great 6 Ward resident on the 7800 block of South Kane Drive. And welcome to you, and you convinced me to vote for Ken today. But in all seriousness, Ken, you've been a great friend, a great supporter of all of us. You've been helpful in your variety of positions here in the City of Chicago, and I think this is a perfect fit for you at Business Affairs. Welcome, and thank you for your service. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Sawyer. The Chair recognizes Alderman Tunny.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to be brief and support Ken, who's always supported us in whatever position that he had. He is the person to He is the person to get things done. I think it's a great choice, and we should have done a couple of months earlier. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Uh, the Chair recognizes Alderman Harris.
Good morning. Thank you, uh, Madam President. Ken, I'm supporting you because, let me say it like this. You know, when I was a new Alderman and I came here, you used to whip me up. But Ken, he was, uh, as, uh, working in the mayor's office, a great, uh, partner with me and for me and really helped me in my new journey as an Alderman, and I'll never forget that. Um, you were always honest to a fault, and so I really appreciate that about you, that you gave it to me straight. Um, and I know that in your new job, you'll give it to a straight, but more than that, you'll put in the time and the work and the hours that it's going to take for that kind of department. So I appreciate your leadership and all that you've done to help me be a better Alderman. I appreciate you, and I'm thrilled about you getting this appointment. And to your mom, she's a South sider, so we love her.
Thank you, Alderman Harris. The Chair recognizes Alderman Maldonado.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also rise in support of this appointment. I've known Ken for several decades. Uh, I know that, yeah, yep. Yeah, he was, uh, you were as a very young guy, you know, a personal assistant to Mayor Daley, and then you held several other positions throughout the city of Chicago. But I'm very, very happy for you that you are getting this position this, uh, to to. I don't know if this is going to be your last top, uh, but, um, but I'm very happy that you are finally getting a commissioner's position in a very, very important department. And I think that your personal qualities of being super hyper, um, as you are, both fit very, very well in this position. Congratulations.
Thank you, Alderman Maldonado. The Chair recognizes Alderman Kaplan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too rise and support this appointment. Ken Myers is good at what he does because he truly believes in public service. And I owe much of that to his mother and his father, Eileen. Uh, and and by the way, both of them are now forty-six-ward residents, just saying. Thank you.
There you go. Uh, the Chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I too join, obviously, this phenomenal appointment. Uh, Ken, everybody knows you. Uh, you're, you were prolific note taker then and still today. Um, it's all about discipline. You showed it throughout the years. Uh, your family's here to honor that. Keep doing what you're doing. Um, there's always a path, uh, how you carve it out. Uh, what you did in the past works. It works now, it worked yesterday, and so I appreciate that because, believe me, we all want to get things done, and you're just that kind of person. Thank you, and I obviously congratulate the family as well.
Thank you, Alderman. Uh, the Chair recognizes Alderman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the city council, I too rise in support of this. Um, Ken, I I don't look at it as, I look at it as enthusiasm. Um, I look at it as vibrancy because you are very vibrant and you are animated and you bring that, and it gives us energy. And wow, it has been decades, right? It doesn't, yeah, right. It doesn't seem like decades, but it has been. But in each role that you've played, you have taken it very serious. You have respected our position. You have respected your position. You have held the line when you needed to, and then we fought when we've needed to. Um, you know, and 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 that's the way it is, and that builds on the relationship. And that is why you hear as many people standing up today speaking on your behalf. Because no matter what side you're on or where you stand, they know that they're being heard. They know that they, their thoughts are either being taken back or considered, or either just an outright no, and we can respect that. And so in your endeavors as in in instead of a consumer affairs, you know, which is, you know, where I started out. Um, it's a wonderful place for you. I think you will enjoy it. Um, I will hope to continue to make your life miserable. Um, but through that misery, we also come up with good ordinances and and good things for the people of the city of Chicago. And so you know that my door is always open and my phone is always on, and it's reciprocal, and your mom should be very proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Roboys.
Ken, finally, we go, we go back about thirty-two years. Uh, you've been a hard worker then, you're a hard worker today, and you certainly worked your way to towards what you have today. Your family should be proud of you, and so are we. So thank you, and I know you're going to do a good job where you're at. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Roboys. The Chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Ken. Uh, I mean, uh, Madam President. Uh, congratulations to you, Ken. For years, you've been behind the scenes, making things happen for everybody else. Uh, you always have been the go-to guy. Uh, you've always been that person that if you go to Ken, you're going to get a straight answer, no chaser. Whether you like it or not, Ken is going to tell you what's real and what's true and what you can and what you can't do. And that's, that's a quality that people respect, uh, because people don't like to be BS. They like to get the truth, and Ken, you have been making this city, um, work for many years. Uh, it's a blessing that you're now in a position to be in charge. So congratulations to you. Congratulations to your family. I'm sure, uh, your nieces and nephews probably heard you tell them a lot of things that they wanted to hear and did not want to hear because you always tell the truth. So, um, I I think you all say dog ashain. Is it dog ashain? Duck, dunk ashain, dunk ashain, Ken.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Thompson.
Thank you, Madam President. I I too rise in support of, uh, this appointment. I think it's an excellent choice. Mrs. Meyer, I'm sure you're very proud. Ken, I'm sure your sisters are very surprised, and I'm sure your nieces and nephews are very, very amazed at, uh, hearing all the great things about what you've done. Uh, you are a true credit to your family, a friend of mine. You've been a great public servant here in the city of Chicago in different capacities, serving with my uncle with, uh, Mayor Daley. And, uh, you've succeeded because you're responsive, you're a true problem solver, and I think you'll be a great commissioner. And I just, uh, wish I could see you, but, uh, I'd just look at Jeff instead. I'm over here, Ken. Uh, but, uh, truly, uh, on behalf of, uh, all the residents in the eleventh ward, uh, we look forward to working with you, Ken, Commissioner, and congratulations.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Smith.
Thank you very much. I just want to add my accolades. I mean, it's, it's very rare, uh, that family members really get to hear what, um, people think of the job that their family members do, and I'm so glad that you brought your family today. Uh, because aside from the kidding around that goes on, you are a a perfect example of a fine public servant and what people who understand how important the work of this city is, give their time and their efforts and their frustrations and their talents to help make our city a better place. And we're so proud of you, Ken, and so delighted, uh, Madam Mayor, with it with this appointment and and congratulations, Ken. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. Uh, the Chair recognizes Alderman Nugent.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Chair. Uh, I also rise in support of this appointment. I've known Ken for a long time, and he's a real, you're a real treat, Ken. You're fun to work with. Uh, your attention to detail is always there, and I may have the distinct pleasure of being the only Alderman here who was Ken's intern. Uh, so I worked for Ken under Mayor Daley, and, um, I learned a ton. I busted my tail. Uh, my job at the time was to read the entire Chicago municipal code and find obsolete laws. Remember that, Ken? Things like if a, uh, if you're going under, uh, on the river under the La Salle or Dearborn Bridge, flash your lamp twice, and we had to write all those ordinances to to remove some of that. So, uh, to Ken's family, he's, he's excellent. He's a, he'll make, he'll be perfect for this role. It's, um, it's a pleasure to work with him on behalf of myself in the thirty-ninth ward. Congrats, Ken.
Thank you, Alderman Nugent. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, uh, Madam President. So, uh, I I think I'm going to follow what Alderman Harris said. All of us here got elected, but some of us came in, I I was appointed, and so, uh, they take you in this little room. Uh, and who's there? Him, and and he kind of like, you know, you talk, at the time, it was Mayor Daley, so Mayor Daley's all happy, blah, 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 blah. Then you meet this guy, and, um, he kind of like, you know, you call it enthusiasm and, uh, I forgot what else, what else you called it, but I call it mania, right? Because, I mean, he literally like reads you the riot act as to blah, 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 blah. But nonetheless, uh, I will say this, uh, you were right, uh, in everything that you said, which is funny. Uh, but you've always been, I I'll say, a hard worker and and real honest with us about, um, everything that what we could do and what we couldn't do and and really kind of frame, uh, how things operated and worked for us, and have always been a resource and an asset to us, uh, throughout your tenure, be it from, uh, BACP buildings or wherever you were in the mayor's office, always been an asset and always was honest, which is something that we really appreciate. We're trying to do the best we can for our community. So appreciate your work, continue your work, and congratulations on this appointment.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to commend you for this appointment. Um, Ken Myers is an outstanding public servant. Um, he's a credit to our city. Um, these remarks you hear from everyone today are usually when people are walking out the door. So I'm glad we're going to get more work out of you. But just, uh, to the family, uh, Ken is an outstanding person and a great friend. Um, I very much value his partnership with the council, and he could probably teach a lot of other commissioners how to work with the council in partnership, um, because that's how we get things done in Chicago. I mean, Ken, you you always get things done. Um, whatever we can do to help you and your department, uh, in your mission, um, you've got a very difficult job, especially during COVID, but you have always helped yourself with great integrity, and I know you'll do a fine job, but, uh, we're here to partner with you to help you succeed in your job because it helps our city succeed. So God bless and good luck in the new, new job. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman, our Alderman Osterman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to support this appointment. I guess I got to add my decades to knowing Ken as well. Uh, but I was a, a young Alderman when I came in, and I first met Ken under the Daley administration, and Ken was all over the place. And, you know, whenever you looked around, all you saw was Ken shooting back and forth, back and forth, like a tennis match. And so Ken, it's been a pleasure to watch you grow. Um, like they said, you are a true public servant, and, uh, we really appreciate everything that you have done for this city. Uh, this is a great appointment, and I think you're going to do great things. Uh, but I do have to tell one story on Ken years ago when I was a young Alderman. Ken is so focused, and when I tell you he's focused like a laser, I mean, he's just on it. There was a real big topic that we were dealing with here in the city, and I was trying to talk to Ken. I said, Ken, he was working in IGA. Ken didn't, didn't move, face didn't change. I said, Ken, I need to talk to you. Face didn't change, Ken didn't move. Ken, I need to talk to you. Ken did not move because he was so focused on making sure he got those votes, and he knew what he had to do. He didn't care about what nobody else said or nobody else did. He was just on it like a, like a laser. And so if you take that same attribute to the department, which I'm sure he is, you're going to do even greater things for this city because that is an attribute that you can't teach. It is something that that is in you, and again, you are a true public servant, so keep doing what you're doing, and it's always been a pleasure to watch you grow in this great city. So thank you so much, Ken, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Alderman Beal. The Chair recognizes Alderman Hopkins.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, I rise in support of this nomination, and I commend you as well for your wise choice, uh, in making this election. Uh, Ken, congratulations. Every step in your remarkable career led you to this moment, and you earned it. So I congratulate you. And Mrs. Meyer, as you're listening to this outpouring of affection and admiration for your son, it's a testament to you and the way you raised him. I know how proud you must be at this moment. So congratulations to you too, and God bless the family.
Thank you, Alderman Hopkins. The Chair recognizes Alderman Burke.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'm pleased to be able to add a word or two to what's already been said, and the good news, Ken, is that most of these speeches that you've, uh, heard, uh, this afternoon are generally in response to a resolution that begins with, "Where has Almighty God and His infinite wisdom as called to His eternal reward?" Thank God that isn't the resolution that we're addressing, uh, now, but it could be that I'm the only one that's been around this building longer than you, Ken. And it isn't it, uh, wonderful to have your mom and your family here to listen to all these kind words. There's an old phrase, uh, Madam President, ladies and gentlemen, that I've heard around this building in the past, and that is that it's nice to be important, but it's more important to be nice. And that is something that, uh, Ken epitomizes, and it's something that he learned from his mom and dad. He didn't learn that from books in college or getting his master's degree, but, uh, you can be very proud of him, uh, and, uh, congratulations. May God bless you and the entire family with good health, um, and continued, uh, success. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Burke. The Chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I too rise, uh, for this awesome appointment. Uh, Ken and I, we just spoke the other day, and, uh, you just liked the movie The Last of the Mohegans, and you've been around a, a long time, and you know how to make things move. Uh, I I'm just sad that it didn't happen earlier on. Uh, thank you for all that you do, and, uh, congratulations.
Thank you, Alderman Curtis. The Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also rise in support and commend you for this appointment for soon-to-be Commissioner Ken Myers, also known as my new bestie. Uh, I want to appreciate you for all the work that you've done. As someone who's worked in business, uh, prior to being a council, I understand very much that what people might view as like speed or focus or energy is just the ability to execute to get things done, and that's something we all need here in the city. Uh, I think, you know, when we first took, uh, office, we would hear from a lot of business owners as to how tough it is to even get certain permits and and move things forward, and really looking at government as such a bureaucracy and viewed as something that doesn't move fast enough. Uh, that has been exacerbated exponentially when we think about the challenges we're going to face through COVID, uh, and the different needs that the businesses have. And so to have somebody in your position that moves every bit as quickly as you do to solve problems, to have conversations with us, only means good things for the city. Uh, so Mama Meyer, I wanted to thank you so much for your work. I can imagine a young Ken speeding through the house to do the dishes and fix his room, hopefully. And want to thank you for the work that you've done because what I've seen in the short amount of time that we've known each other is someone who I know is going to execute and really move our city forward in a time where we badly need it. So thank you so much, Madam.
Thank you, Alderman Vasquez. The Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Uh, I too rise in support of this appointment. Ken, I echo all the words that you've already heard. Um, as somebody who is a new Alderman, I want to thank you for your patience, um, for your kindness, for your wisdom, and for, uh, I'm not as well-versed as a lot of my colleagues, and, uh, you're able to explain it, uh, to me, give me information that I can give, excuse me, that I can give to residents and business owners in my ward, um, and that is priceless. So I thank you, um, and and I commend your family, uh, and you should all be very proud. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gardner. The Chair recognizes Alderman Wagas.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Mrs. Meyer and family, I hope he's taking you to like the best restaurant possible today after going through this, but, um, on the way there, I thought I would give you a list of things for him to do. Maybe you could kind of slip it to him, and, uh, it's a laundry list of everything that we want done, um, Ken, just so you know. Uh, but that is, that joking aside, um, you know, my colleagues have really said a lot of, um, great things about you, how you've worked, and I I agree with them, going back to when I first started. But, um, and I've heard this from them today and in the last few days, but the one thing that kind of touched me was a business owner who said, um, Ken loves Chicago, and he loves this city, and that's why he does such a great job. And with that, uh, I'll end it, and that's why I'm voting for you. Thanks.
Recognizes older woman down. Hold on one second. Ladies and gentlemen, let's stay at ease for two minutes to find out what's going on with the alarm. All right, the Chair recognizes Alderwoman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to add my voice to those congratulating Commissioner-to-be, Ken Meyer. One of the things that I have admired about you, I didn't know you very much during the daily days, but we have gotten to know each other during this time. And I want to say that your attention to detail and the fact that you're very proactive and not reactive is something that I have admired in you, and I know are traits that will help you as you take the helm of the Department of BACP. I just wish you a lot of success. And as Alderman Osterman said, I think you are an example of how a commissioner should work with this body. And hopefully, the things that you've learned will go to some other folks, but thank you very much. Good luck to you.
Thank you, Alderman Dow. The Chair recognizes Alderman Vegas.
I stand to be associated with this appointment as well. And Ken, we hear that fire alarm. I think he had his staff ready, just in case it wasn't going too well. But Ken is a hard worker who's survived two different other administrations and now is the Commissioner. And I view the BACP Commissioner as an economic development position, where besides protecting consumers, you're also advocating for small businesses, specifically restaurants and hospitality industry. And your work has demonstrated that when there is an issue, it's not always no, but it's also how can we try to get to a point, to try to get to the middle of what we're trying to accomplish? And I really respect that as a Commissioner. And so I look forward to continuing working with you and making sure that we're having small businesses thrive in the city of Chicago, and good luck on this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Vegas. Any other members wish to speak to this matter? Let me just then conclude by saying this. Throughout this pandemic, we've gotten to know many of our city departments quite well. Obviously, the Department of Public Health, first and foremost, but BACP has also been on the front lines. Every time we change a regulation or mitigation, BACP was reaching out and really expanding the depth of our reach in our small business communities across the city. They have done yeoman's work. And you heard me say this in the retirement of the former Commissioner, but Ken was with her every step of the way. And he has been doing a tremendous job in the acting Commissioner role. I am grateful for the council's consideration of him as Commissioner and look, hope for a favorable outcome. Now, Alderman Nugent said that she's known Ken for quite a long time and actually worked for him. Now, I didn't work for him, but I worked for city government back in the day under Richard M. Daley. And the truth is, I'm honest, I was a little afraid of Ken, because Ken exercised a lot of power, but always in the service of the people. And it's my great honor and pleasure to be working with you as a Commissioner as we move forward to strengthen small businesses and protect consumers. I know you're putting together a great and dynamic team at BACP, and I ask for the council's favorable consideration of this nomination. Chairman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. And Ken, as you know, I'm like my colleagues, and I listen to all of them, and every last one of them said something that you can put in your memory book, how you operate. For 21 years, when I walked in the door, I remember you being there, detailed, telling me what to put on, what to wear, what door to go through to make sure that everything was okay, very detailed. And every day since then, you've been the same way. You want to make sure you're doing what's right. You are a people person. I've never seen you really just get upset. You always take care of problems. Let's just get it done. And I can appreciate your mother for how she have raised you to be. And I mentioned to your nieces that takes something from you, because government is not an easy job. This is a calling that you have that you can share with the family and what they could use for themselves in their life. I don't think that the mayor couldn't have made a better choice. When she selected you, I have not been so happy and rejoiced of an appointment that I am of Ken, because I know he's a hard worker. He's going to get the job done. He's going to listen to what a person have to say and then give him his truthful opinion, and we can take it and work it out. So I can just concur with all my colleagues on everything that's been said, that you are a perfect time, and I know your father is not here, but if he were, I'm surely he would be just as proud as we are standing here today. I just want to share with some of you, there are some family members that Ken have here that are in some of you all's wards. Since you were talking about ward, Alderman Capom has the mother. So we have a niece, Lindsey Burns is in the 44th Ward, Alderman Turney. And then we have Jenny Burns, 32nd Ward, Alderman Wagas back. And then Matthew Burns is in the 2nd Ward, Alderman Hopkins. But guess what? Ken's father is in all our wards. So thank you all very much. God bless you as he is resting in heaven, looking down on all of us, looking at you today, Ken, the work you've accomplished, and you make us all proud, makes the family proud, and we know you're going to be doing some great work. Alderman Harrison started, you're already putting some work. I just heard an ordinance get introduced into city council for our next meeting that we can start to work on. So thank you, Madam Chairman. And I move that the city council concur in the recommendation of the License Committee and pass this item by the same roll call as item number one of the Committee on Finance report and the same unsuccessful motion to reconsider. Congratulations.
Thank you. Happy holidays to your family.
Our next item on the agenda, item number 02021-5192, an ordinance renewing restricted residential zone pursuant to Chapter 4-17 of the Municipal Code. In the 13th Ward, I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection. Four ordinance regarding moratoriums in the various wards, the 5th, 14th, 16th, and the 48th Ward. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, I'm reporting now for a joint committee on license and consumer protection, zoning, and landmark standards, where we held a virtual meeting on December 7, 2021, recessed, and came back on December 13, 2021. And the following item was passed by the joint committee. Item number 02021-3243, a substitute ordinance to amend the Municipal Code Title 4, 8, and 17 by modifying various section and adding new Article 7 to Chapter 4-156 to regulate sports wagering. Madam President, I move that the city council concur in the recommendation of the License Committee and pass this item by the same roll call vote as item number one of the Committee on the Finance Report and the same successful motion to reconsider, with the exception of Alderman Dow, Beal, Cardenas, Lopez, Moore, Riley, and Smith.
Objection, so ordered. At Alderman Quinn as a no. Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President.
Now, you know that this matter has already been...
And he reported no.
Done, and you reported as a no vote.
Yes, but I wanted to speak on that, Madam. Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to say that I appreciate all the owners, especially getting on the phone calls and pushing, but I do want to see those owners even more active in our community so that when we get to things like this, that we can be supportive. My concern and reason for voting no, when I ask and I ask for specific information, or you could tell me yes, you can tell me no, but when you don't get an answer at all, that's a problem. And to me, that's disrespectful. When we are trying to make sure that there's equity and parity, I told everybody after George Floyd and this COVID, I'm not going back to what people called normal, because that wasn't normal, especially for African-Americans. We see the numbers, we see the disparities constantly, and so I am not going back to that. And so at the end of the day, if we're not trying to be intentional about bringing partners on, if we're not trying to be intentional about investing in communities, and then those are the things I don't want to support. I appreciate the turkeys, I appreciate the toys, but you know what? Everybody giving toys and turkeys. And so at the end of the day, things got to be substance so people can begin to buy their own toys and turkeys. And so I appreciate, especially Julian Green at Wrigley Field, for reaching out, talking about we're going to have more dialogue after this. And I'd like to have more dialogue with others, owners and their representatives after this so we can work together, because there will be other things that come up, and I want to be supportive, not to one that's saying no. But I have to be able to tell my community why I'm voting yes for something, and when I cannot do that, I cannot support it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
There is a no as well. Thank you.
All right.
President, I renew my motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered, with the exception of the additional no vote.
Thank you, Madam President. And that will conclude my report of the Committee on License and Consumer Protection and Zoning and Landmark Standards. Thank you, Madam President.
Chairman Mitz, I just want to make sure that we covered everything in your Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Were there any other items?
Let me go back and look here.
What item was missed? Just want to reiterate that I asked for residential zones and the various moratoriums in my report as well.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That was moratoriums in the 5th, 14th, 16th, and the 48th Ward. That was on the first report.
Okay.
That was the first report that I did, and it was mentioned then.
Thank you. I missed that.
Thank you.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. All right, next up, the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Chairman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, for which a meeting was held on Thursday, December 9, 2021. Before the committee, there were 89 items. There were 88 routine items that passed and one routine item that did not pass. I move passage of these items in the Honibus. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Chair recognizes Alderman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to correct the record. The earlier report that I read cannot be considered today, one, because the items are no longer in the Rules Committee. So, one, it violates the Rules Committee and the Open Meetings Act in that they were not noticed, so we cannot hear that item. We cannot record those items today.
So the first report will be stricken?
Yes.
And hearing no objections, so ordered. Next up. I'm sorry. Next up, the Committee on, oh, sorry. The Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you. That report that was reported out, that was gavelled and approved, correct?
And then corrected, and I think that's what the...
Madam President, you cannot go back and undo something that you gavelled.
I believe I can.
No, you cannot, Madam President.
Particularly when it violates...
It was reported and approved and gavelled. You cannot go back and undo that. That is a done deal, signed, sealed, and delivered.
When the item that is brought forward, the chairman recognizes that there was brought forth an error, when it has not been properly noticed and it violates the Open Meetings Act, we absolutely... If you, Madam Beal, please let me just finish, and I'll let you respond. The item, the chairman indicated that she inadvertently went through an agenda that was not the correct agenda, that was not properly noticed, and as a consequence would violate the Open Meetings Act. She has come back and corrected the record, as I understand it, and asked that the first reading be stricken. That is entirely appropriate. The item was not in the jurisdiction of the committee.
That's no different than voting on something and say, oh, I didn't mean to vote on that, and go back and change your vote after the gavel is gavelled. Our rules state that once something is gavelled and approved, it is signed, sealed, and delivered, regardless if it was a mistake or not.
So Alderman Beal, show me which rule says that, because that's not correct. What's correct is that we have to follow state law, that things have to be properly noticed so that we do not violate the Opens Meetings Act. And the inadvertent mistake that was made by the chairman to read an agenda that actually wasn't before the body, we absolutely have not only the opportunity, but the obligation to correct that record, which is what the chairman has done.
On that note, Madam President, once again, ladies and gentlemen, is why we need our own parliamentarian and our own legal team to represent this council. There's a conflict of interest when you have corporation council wearing two hats. We need to separate powers in this council. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Harris. Next up, the Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. On the previous topic, I'd appeal the decision of the chair to the body.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. We have a medical emergency. When we had our pause in the proceedings, I believe that Alderman Lopez was asking to appeal the ruling of the chair. Is that correct?
Thank you, Madam President. That was my intent, but obviously, clearly, with everyone in the state they find themselves in, I would just withdraw that for the moment so we could get back to business while thanking our colleagues. our colleagues for stepping up for Alderman Austin in her moment.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. Alright. Next up is the, Chair recognizes Chairman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like for us to offer a few minutes of prayer for our colleague as, I think it's important that we just keep in our mind and suspend the rules for, make consideration, offer up a prayer.
Alright. This is motion to suspend the rules for us to have a moment of reflection and prayer. Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. If my colleagues would just bow their heads with me, in times like these, we take life for granted, we don't know when and where anything can happen to any one of us, so right now, Lord, we're asking for your blessings upon our colleague Alderman Austin as she go ahead and let the doctors do the work that they do to make sure that her health is good and that she's good, dear Lord. You said, "Ask, and it shall be given," and we're calling upon you because you are the one who has all the power, all the medicine, everything she needs to be able to be healed. And we ask you right now to cover her, cover our mind, cover our spirit, and cover each one of us as we continue to do your work. We just want to make sure, as you know, we recognize you right now, Father. In Jesus' name, we all pray, amen.
Chairman Austin, do you, or Chairman Mitz, do you move to return to the regular order of business?
Madam President, I move that we return to our regular order of business.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Next up is the Committee on Public Safety, Chairman Talia Farrow.
Good afternoon, Madam President and members of the City Council. Reporting for your Committee on Public Safety for which a meeting was held on December 9th, on December 10th, 2021, there were two items before the committee for which the committee recommended passage, the appointment of Stephen Block as a member of the Police Board and the appointment of Maury Lee Kuzak as a member of the Police Board. Madam President, if there are no objections, I recommend the passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call in the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Objection so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report.
The Chair recognizes Alderman, our Chairman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'd like to, I'd like the record to reflect that my report including a code amendment, namely amendment of the Municipal Code, Section 9-64-206, by installing parking meters and regulating parking meter hours of operation on portions of South State Street, South Federal Street, South Plymouth Court, and West Polk Street, 02021-4944. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman Burnett. Next up, the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation, Vice Chair Vasquez.
President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation, also known as the Happy Committee, for which a virtual meeting was held on December 2, 2021, the committee recommends passage of the following item, A 2021-170, an appointment of Erin Harkey as Commissioner of Cultural Affairs and Special Events. If no members have comments, I would move the passage of this item, and I would like to have comments at the end if other members don't.
Are there any members of the body that wish to speak to this appointment? The Chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
Thank you so much. Erin, it's such a pleasure to have you coming on board officially as our Commissioner. You're inheriting such a vibrant department, one, as you'd remember from the last budget season, we're making some unprecedented and much-needed investments in, and I just really look forward to seeing what your leadership brings as we really invest in ourselves, in our communities, and in this city. You, you do have, I'm sure, literally and figuratively some big shoes to fill, but from talking to you, we know that you're more than capable. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Laspada. The Chair recognizes Alderman Hadden.
Madam President, keep it brief, I said it in committee, really excited, Erin, to have your leadership. I should have coordinated with you, since you're my hair twin, to let you know that I was getting a haircut, but I'll get, I'll be better about that next time. So, love you and your team, going to keep up the good work, and then under your experience and leadership, I know you're going to continue the fantastic work of DK, so, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Hadden. Any other members of the body? Alderman Coleman, Alderman Maldonado, next. Alderman Coleman.
Congratulations, Commissioner. You know, I've been an advocate from you. Thank you for everything that you've done, even serving under Commissioner Kelly, all the work that you do, especially bringing the wonderful cultural and affairs to neighborhoods like Inglewood and on the south and west side, and I know you will continue and take it up a notch. Congrats.
Thank you, Alderman Coleman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Maldonado.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I still, I also rise in support of this appointment. Erin, I just met you maybe around a year ago when we started to work on some very important mural in my ward, calling attention to the violence that many of our youngsters do experience in our communities of color. And you were very, very supportive from the very beginning, and I was very, very much impressed by your commitment and understanding of what we wanted to do, and for that, I thank you, and I know that you're going to keep that same level of commitment into your new role as Commissioner. Congratulations.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Tunny.
Madam President, I want to rise in support of the nomination. I would be remiss how much we enjoy working with you, especially my staff, because I know we're calling every day, we have a lot of special events, so to speak, along the lakefront and block parties and such. As Alderman Maldonado said, we work very closely on our public art program and also uniquely on the Chicago Sculpture exhibit. So, on behalf of the residents of my ward, I wish you success, and, and I know you'll do a great job. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Tunny. Any other members of the body who wish to speak to this nomination? Alderman Vasquez.
President, Erin, I, I want to commend you on this role. I think when we think about what arts does for folks, I think personally of just my life, I would not be anywhere near this position if it wasn't for being involved in arts and really opening up the ability to be creative, to express myself, and really think about new opportunities. You have absolutely big shoes to fill, but I have no doubt you will do so, especially when we look at what the city is going to face and how we need to create opportunities for our youth and children. I also want to commend the mayor for this appointment, for having a woman and a woman of color in leadership that I think we need to see more examples of, so thank you so much for that. Thank you, Madam Mayor. If no one else has any comments.
There's one other, I think, member that wants to speak. The Chair recognizes Alderman Dow.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I wanted to just support this appointment. I've gotten to know Erin, a Commissioner-to-be, over the last, I would say, eight months, and she's very thoughtful and very committed and passionate about art and culture in this city. We have worked together on a couple of committees, and I look forward to getting to know you better, and I'm very excited about the promise of the Department of Cultural Affairs and Special Events under your leadership, and wish you good luck. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Dow. Any other members that wish to speak on this matter? If I may, before you make the motion, Erin, a native Angelino, but has come and embraced our city with great gusto. I'm honored that not only is she here, members of her leadership team, arts and culture are the heartbeat of our city, and we have a lot of work to do, but a great and enthusiastic members of our advisory committee, but also in our neighborhoods, and seeing arts and culture not just in the big institutions downtown, but making sure that we're nurturing that next great artistic talent, our theaters, our music venues, so much that makes us a special place to be. I think one of the biggest challenges that we face going forward is making sure that we support our artists, our musicians, and our other folks that are laboring in the arts and culture world, but doing the things that they love so that they can actually live in our city. Many have left, we need them back, and you know that. Your team is, are ready and willing and able, so the special events are always great, but let's also make sure that we focus on the arts and the culture part of DK's, and I know that you will. I am grateful that you said yes, and I look forward to working with you in the years ahead. Back to you, Alderman Vasquez.
President, I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, the Committee on Transportation and Public Way, Chairman Brookens.
Madam President, reporting for your Committee on Transportation and Public Way. A meeting was held on December 9, 2021. The following ordinances were passed by a majority of the members present. On page two includes one mural introduction for extension of expanded outdoor dining program. Pages three through 12 include 110 ordinances for grants and privileges introduced by the local alderman from wards 1 through 4, 6, 14, 16, 17, 21, 23, 27, 28, 30, 32, 33, 36, 37, 39, 40, 42, 44, and 47 through 49. Page 13 also includes three ordinances for canopies introduced by the local alderman from wards 2, 36, and 44. Pages 14 and 15 includes 13 ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by the local alderman from wards 3, 16, 21, 22, 25, 28, 30, 38, 40, 44, and 46. Page 16 includes two ordinances for transportation items introduced by local aldermen in wards 14 and 35. Madam President, if there are no objections, I move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote for the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report. Merry Christmas to all.
Next up, the Committee on Workforce Development, Chairman Sodlaske Garza.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the City Council. Reporting for your Committee on Workforce Development, which held a virtual meeting on December 2, 2021, there was one item on the agenda, 02021-4644, amendment of the Municipal Code Title VI by modifying various sections and adding new sections, 6-100-010 and 6100-030 regarding worker protections. A substitute ordinance, S, excuse me, O2021-4644, was accepted by the committee. The Committee on Workforce Development recommended that SO2021-4644 do pass by unanimous voice vote. Unless there are members wishing to speak to this item and hearing no objection, I move that the City Council concur in the recommendation of the committee and pass this item out by the same roll call vote as item one on the Committee on Finance, on the Committee on Finance Report, and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Ladies and gentlemen, let me remind you, there's no talking on your cellphones in the council chamber. You need to do that, please step out.
This concludes the report on the Committee on Workforce.
Thank you, Alderman Garza. Next up, the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards.
Madam President and members of the City Council, presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, which had a meeting held on December 15 of 2021. These reports are grouped for convenience. The following items were passed by a majority of the members present. Page one contains the reappointment of Lori E. Lightfoot as member of the Public Building Commission. I move passage of this item by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Finance Committee and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page, page one contains document number 02021-4892, amendment of Municipal Code Chapters 4-232, 14, A through 4, 17-9, 17-10, 17-11, 17-13, 17-14, 17-16 regarding certificate of occupancy and zoning certification. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Pages 1 through 6 contains various map amendments in the first, second, fifth, 10th, 15th, 17th, 21st, 25th, 26th, 27th, 28th, 29th, 31, and 33rd wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Alright. On page six contains document number 02021-1953, a map amendment for the address commonly known as 8535 West Higgins Road. I move passage by the side and by a roll call vote noting that Alderman Napolitano would like to speak, and maybe there's other members that would like to speak on this issue.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this. I'll try to make this brief. I get, I get what we're doing here. I get that a lot of people are here to champion a cause, and it's a great cause, and it's something that's near and dear to many of your hearts and part of what you've run campaigns on, and a way that we're looking to change the city of Chicago in many ways, and I appreciate that, and I applaud you for it, and I would never try to take that away from you because that's what our job here is, is advocates for our wards. But that's the most important point. We're all, we're all here as an advocate for our wards. Just a brief, as brief as I can give you, what, what we're getting ready to vote on is, this is an item that came up in 2017, it was proposed to our ward, and it was denied by our ward to build it. It went to our City Council in 2018, and our colleagues voted against it as well and voted to decline this project. The problem with it, that is, the new new now is, when you have a project that's voted down in City Council in the past or in the future, the new new is they have the ability now to repropose that exact same project, go directly to planning and development without the wishes of your ward, without your residents having a say. We've submitted over 2,700 signatures from our ward in opposition to this project. We have well over 7,500 apartments in the area with, by the city's numbers, they are occupied at 96%, which means we have over 300 vacant apartments that aren't owned by mom and pop shop, I mean, that aren't owned by corporate USA, they're owned by mom and pop. They're owned by my residents. There are three flats, six flats, and nine flats. I have three large, large units there that house probably up to 3,500 of those almost 8,000 apartments, which means the rest of those fall on three flats, four flats, and six flats, and nine flats, who are owned by my residents. What this does today, what your vote, it tells my residents, and it'll tell your residents tomorrow, that as an advocate of, of the ward, that our say in protecting them as property owners, as taxpayers, is no longer heard. The biggest problem here is this has already been shot down by your zoning committee. The biggest problem here is this is changing a commercial PD to a residential PD against the wishes of the community and the all. of the community and the aldermen. The biggest problem here is tomorrow or today, while you're advocating for a great cause, you're taking away your right to decide what happens in your ward tomorrow. In your ward tomorrow, it could be a residential PD, changed to a manufacturing PD because it follows the agenda that might not be of your ward, but might be of other wards. So all I'm saying is I get the predicament we're in here. I get the titles that are going to be put on people that's aldermanic prerogative, but it's not aldermanic prerogative. We're all told to come down here and to support our communities. We're all told to come down here and to push ordinances that make the city of Chicago just a little bit better. And by doing that, we lean on our colleagues to support those ordinances or to support the not building or developing in somebody's ward against the wishes of that ward. So aldermanic prerogative falls on everything we do down here, not just the city of Chicago, but it's at the state and federal level as well. This is the same thing that happens. I know a lot of people are going to come up and stand and they're going to talk about what, what this is, and it's bringing affordable housing to the city of Chicago, and, and that's a great cause to fight for. But you're putting it somewhere where the community, that community doesn't want the development. When the development came here in 2017, there was no affordable housing. When the development went in front of you in zoning commission in 2018, there was no affordable housing. It was amended at the last second to tug on the heartstrings of what a lot of you champion, and gratefully so champion, but it was changed just to build a development. It was changed to put something in place that hurts the community that already has apartments that need to be rented out. So I don't want to sit here and grandstand anymore about it because that's not what I'm doing. I'm doing what I consider is my job. I know many of you will come up in total opposition for it, or you were called to not, not support this, and I get it. But just remember this. Just remember this. Whether you like me or not, I'm in the hot seat right now. You're going to be in this hot seat tomorrow. And when it goes around your ward, your zoning committees, like I have one, when it goes around them and it goes around you to decide whether this is best for your ward, and it goes straight to City Hall and then right to zoning, and you vote no, and everyone else votes yes because they're told to, you're going to be in the same exact predicament I'm in right now. Eliminate what the agenda is right now and just think of how this is changing your ability to be an advocate for your ward going forward permanently. It is now a precedent being set. I don't get mad at the mayor for this. I don't get mad at city council for this. I don't get mad at the chairman for this because this is part of it, and it's part of our job, and it, it, this is, these are the hard times. Again, we've been going through this project for over four and a half, almost five years. This is nothing new in here, and your colleagues have already shot it down or denied it. I'm just saying, I'm asking you to, to give a favorable vote on behalf of, of my ward because tomorrow it's your ward. And think long and hard of how that's going to change in your ward and how you are going to be representing your ward. I just appreciate the opportunity to speak, Madam President. Chairman, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Any other members of the body choose to address this matter? If I may, Madam Tunny, briefly. Ladies and gentlemen, I don't have to give you the history of segregation in the city. And our housing is at the heart of it. Not allowing certain people to be in certain places, particularly when it comes to affordability. I have a great deal of respect for the aldermen. I rarely weigh in on these kinds of projects. But ladies and gentlemen, this is a time not to just think about your own interest. It's a time to think about cities' interests. This is a project that was going to be 10% affordable. And now with the passage of time, it will be 20% affordable. And what I know from our Commissioner of Aviation, and what I know from the workers that work at the airport, many of whom have to travel an hour plus, in some instances, two hours one way, one way, to work in these jobs. This gives them the opportunity to actually be closer to a job that they need, closer to a job that's going to make a difference in the lives of their families. And again, have a lot of respect for the aldermen. I personally went out to the site to see it for myself. Ordered, not by city, Park Ridge. So this is critical for our city. It's critical for us to make a statement about affordability and where it can be located. And understanding many of the arguments that were made today, and I get it. But if we're going to remain competitive at our airport, if we're going to make sure that we have workers that can fill the jobs that are there, that our vendors are struggling to fill, this is a necessary project that must move forward, and I ask for yours. Chairman Tunny.
Madam President, I, there has been a call for a roll call. And before we take our vote, I just wanted to just remind, as Alderman Napolitano said, to vote affirmative, that would not be the case. If you do not want this development to move forward, you vote no. If you want this development to move forward, you vote yes. I just wanted to clarify that based on Alderman Napolitanos' ask for an affirmative vote. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Lisbada. Lisbada is yes. Alderman Hopkins. Hopkins is a no. Alderman Dow. Dow is a yes. Alderman King. Alderman King. King is a yes. Alderman Hairston. Hairston is a yes. Alderman Sawyer. Sawyer is a yes. Alderman Mitchell. Mitchell is a yes. Alderman Harris. Harris is a yes. Alderman Beal. Beal is a no. Alderman Zdloski Garza. Zdloski Garza is a yes. Alderman Thompson. Thompson is a no. Alderman Cardenas. Cardenas is a yes. Alderman Quinn. Quinn is a no. Alderman Burke. Burke is a no. Alderman Lopez. Lopez is a no. Alderman Coleman. Coleman is a yes. Alderman Moore. Moore is a no. Alderman Curtis. Curtis is a yes. Alderman O'Shea. O'Shea is a yes. Alderman Taylor. Taylor is a yes. Alderman Brookens. Brookens is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez. Rodriguez is a yes. Alderman Tabarez. Tabarez is a no. Alderman Scott. Scott is a yes. Alderman Tito Lopez. Tito Lopez is a yes. Alderman Maldonado. Maldonado is a yes. Alderman Burnett. Burnett is a yes. Alderman Urban. Urban is a yes. Alderman Talafaro. Talafaro is a no. Alderman Revoyas. Revoyas is a yes. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Wagaspack. Wagaspack is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Austin. Austin, oh, that's right. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Ramirez Rosa is a yes. Alderman Vegas. Vegas is a yes. Alderman Mitz. Mitz is a yes. Alderman Spazado. Alderman Nugent. Nugent is a no. Alderman Vazquez. Vazquez is a yes. Alderman Napolitano. Napolitano is a no. Alderman Riley. Riley is a no. Alderman Smith. Smith is a yes. Alderman Tunny. Tunny is a yes. Alderman Gardner. Gardner is a no. Alderman Capelman. Capelman is a yes. Alderman Martin. Martin is a yes. Alderman Osterman. Osterman is a yes. Alderman Haddon. Haddon is a yes. Alderman Silverstein. Silverstein is a yes.
The ayes are 33, the nays are 13. The matter passes. Alderman Mitchell on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam Chairman, I call for reconsideration of the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those in favor, all those opposed say nay. The motion for reconsideration fails. The matter passes. Chairman Tunny.
Pages six through eight contain various map amendments in the 41st, 44th, 47th wards. I move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Finance Committee and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. Page nine contains various large signs over 100 square feet in area, 24 feet above grade in the 14th, 21st, 27th, 34th, 44th, 47th, and 50th wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And lastly, page nine contains a journal correction for document number for the property commonly known as 3501 through 3519 North Halsted. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Tunny. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, matters on the agreed calendar. Chairman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. I received from the clerk, Daniel Valencia, a total of 175 items for the proposed agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, and tributary resolutions from the following aldermen: Alderman Harris, Alderman Beal, Alderman Thompson, Alderman Cardenas, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Burke, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Coleman, Alderman Curtis, Alderman Brookens, Alderman Vegas, Alderman Mitz, Alderman Spazado, Alderman Vasquez, Alderman Smith, Alderman Capelman. I move these be approved in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Next up, new business. Mr. Clerk, please call the wards beginning with the 50th.
Claims, free permits, license fee exemptions, which are referred to the Committee on Finance. Zoning amendments, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Traffic regulations, traffic control signals, and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Grants of privileges under the public way, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. An exemption from physical barrier requirements for commercial driveway alley access to parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Martin has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section 9-68-023 to further regulate zone LV2 Wrigley Field area parking permits, which is referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Alderman Riley has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section 2-156-090 to further regulate, further regulate representation of other persons by appointed official, by appointed officials, which is referred to the Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight. Alderman Riley also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Vazquez has proposed ordinance for an approval of plat of Torianovitsky subdivision, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Spazado has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section 4-60-022 to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of West Addison Street, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Vegas has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honorary Roman Kurzak Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Vegas also has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Titles III and IX regarding motorist decals or devices and residential parking permits for persons with disabilities, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Wagaspack has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section 17-3-0503D by modifying certain pedestrian street designations on portion of North Milwaukee Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Cardona has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Camarino Linda Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Talafaro has a proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section 4-60-022 to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of West Grand Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Talafaro also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Burnett has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 1454 West Randolph Street, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Maldonado has proposed order for amendment of Municipal Code Sections 4-60-022 and 4-60-023 to disallow additional alcoholic liquor and package good licenses on portions of West Chicago Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Maldonado also has a proposed order for amendment of Municipal Code Section 4-60-022 and 4-60-023 to disallow additional alcoholic liquor and package good licenses on portions of West Armintage Avenue and North Kimball Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Rodriguez has a proposed order for an honorary street designation as Honorary Otis Clay Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Coleman has proposed order for amendment of Municipal Code Sections 4-60-022 and 4-60-022 to disallow additional alcoholic liquor and package good licenses on portions of various public ways in the 16th ward, which are referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Quinn has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Donald J. Powers Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Cardenas has proposed ordinance for approval of Matthias Rita subdivision, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Vegas has proposed resolution calling for hearings on the Chicago Police Department's referral to Department of Buildings, which is referred to a joint committee comprised of the members of the Committee on Public Safety and the members of the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Ramirez Rosa has proposed ordinance for renaming of Woodward Plaza as Solidarity Triangle, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Harris has proposed ordinance for transfer of funds within the City Council Committee on Committees and Rules for the year 2021, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. And Alderman Lisbada and others have proposed resolution calling for establishment of pilot program to provide publicly available bathrooms throughout the city of Chicago, which is referred to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Your Honor, that concludes aldermanic introductions.
Peter? Next up, approval of the journal. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I am not aware of any corrections to the journal from November 17, 2021 or December 1, 2021. I move that both be approved.
All those in favor of approving the journal signify by saying aye. Any opposed say no. The motion is carried. Unfinished business. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I'm not aware of any unfinished business.
Miscellaneous business. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I'm not aware of any miscellaneous business.
The date and time of the next meeting?
I've handed up an ordinance to the clerk, said the date and time for the next meeting.
Beedled by the City Council of the City of Chicago that the next regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago shall be held on Wednesday, January 26, 2022, beginning at 10 o'clock a.m. in the City Council chambers on the second floor of City Hall, 121 North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. If prior to then, there is a determination that an in-person meeting is not practical nor prudent due to COVID-19 in accordance with Section 7-E of the Open Meetings Act, the next regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago may be conducted by video conference in accordance with applicable law. Any such determination will be posted on the Office of the City Clerk's website along with an amended meeting agenda indicating that the meeting will be conducted by video conference by 10 o'clock a.m. on Monday, January 24, 2022. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Hairston.
Point of clarification, January 22nd, I mean, the 24th or the 26th?
The council meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, January 26, 2022.
Thank you.
If there's a change, that notice will be posted on the clerk's website on Monday, January 24, 2022.
Okay. Next meeting, January 26. Alderman Mitchell.
I move passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell, the omnibus.
Madam President, I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Finance and associate unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Ladies and gentlemen, before we adjourn, two important things. Remember, we're meeting towards the end of January as our first meeting of the year, and I want to remind everyone that tomorrow is public hearings for the casino proposals. Folks will be coming, the bidders will be coming and doing their public presentations. If you want to go in person, it's at UIC Pavilion, starting at 1 a.m. Otherwise, you can watch the live stream. I encourage all to tune in one way or the other. Now, with that being said, to adjourn.
There being no further business for this body, I move that we adjourn.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Happy holidays, everyone.